Order two, actual meetings, the city council open meeting as well as a special meeting. And welcome. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Councilmember Baldino.
Present.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Persak.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Here.
And Mayor Boils.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're gonna have the invocation read by our very own city clerk, Tracy Weaver. And then the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Protem Pimentel. If you could all please rise. Bishop Garrett, are you here?
I didn't see him.
No, okay, thank you.
Heavenly Father, as we meet here tonight, we ask your divine assistance in conducting the affairs of the community. Please grant the leaders of our community the insight and courage to serve the citizens of El Segundo. Guide our elected officials in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring the continued growth and prosperity for El Segundo. Amen.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Madam Clerk. So, we have a couple presentations this evening. The first one is related to Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Proclamation from the city of El Segundo, whereas the office of the municipal clerk is a time honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of governments at all other levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas the municipal clerk continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerks through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, now therefore the mayor and members of the city council, to hereby proclaim April 30th through May 6, 2023, as Municipal Clerk Week in El Segundo, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Tracy Weaver, Deputy City Clerk Lily Sandoval, Patricia Herrera, the records technician, and all municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
All right. Madam Clerk, I see Patricia from your office, if you wanna, yeah, great.
You know I don't like that kind of stuff. Twice in one year. Thank you. And I couldn't do this without Patricia and Lily. And we make a great team, and we'll continue to keep you guys on track and transparent and make you follow the rules. (applause)
Oh, you're in the picture. You are in the picture.
I'm always in the background.
There we go.
Oh, my God.
Very good. Here we go, guys. And one, two, one more. How about one more? Thank you so much.
So I'm very excited to read this. It's a proclamation of the city of El Segundo, whereas on May 2023 is National Older Americans Month, a time set aside annually to commemorate and celebrate the significant contribution older Americans have made to the community of El Segundo. And whereas El Segundo is committed to valuing all individuals and recognizing their ongoing life achievements. And whereas older Americans poses and share a wealth of experience, background, and history, making them one of the city's most treasured and enduring resources. And whereas older Americans are available, capable, and enthusiastic to provide volunteer service that contribute to a coordinated, community-based system of social, emotional, physical well-being of not only other seniors, but the community at large, thus an important part of the ties that bind both the family and community. And whereas recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments. And whereas Nancy Jacob, very well-deserving winner, was nominated by her peers as the 2023 El Segundo Older American of the Year, a recognition, excuse me, recognition, rec, God, recon, recognition, sorry, which identifies, inspires, and promotes community involvement and the spirit of giving back to others through volunteerism and community engagement. Now therefore, on this second day of May 2023, the mayors and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023, Older Americans Month 2023, Nancy Jacobson, the 2023 El Segundo Older American of the Year, and hereby recognize the Elder Fest Celebration Saturday, May 20, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Jaws and Center to recognize all senior citizens who have given generously of their time and talent to improve the quality of life for all of El Segundo. So congratulations, Nancy. Would you like to come up and say a few words? You've been, no? (applause) I didn't know I was so old. I have no words. I don't know what to say. It's an honor. But I think there's so many others within the community that are as, should be in this position. But thank you very much.
(applause) Family, would you like to come out?
Yeah.
There we go. That's good. Perfect. Perfect. All right. We could have the young ladies just scooch a little bit this way, so we can see your beautiful faces. All right. Here we go, guys. We'll take a couple photos here. And one, and two, and one more. Thank you so much.
Grandkids have nothing to live up to, just a grandpa that was mayor, I don't know, five times or whatever, and a grandma that's, you know, Older American of the Year for the entire country. So, no pressure. All right. We have public communications. Now this is related to both the open meeting and the special meeting. This is related to city business only. And Madam Clerk, do you have an indication of how many comments we have?
I think we only have three, four.
Four. Okay, so we'll, we'll limit the comments to five minutes per, as usual.
Okay.
Thank you.
First up is Jim Bulgaretti.
Hi, good evening. Jim Bulgaretti. I live over on Bungalow, which apparently half the, half the esteemed people in this city do. I don't know, man, they put something in the water over there. I want to speak to the agenda item on the hiring of the interim fire chief, Robert Espinosa. Just a couple, a couple things. I'd like to start, I'd like to talk for a minute about how we got here and why we're hiring an interim fire chief. I remember when I got the invitation, December 7, 2021, at 3:00 p.m. over on the apron of Fire Station One, had the badge ceremony for Fire Chief Dina Lee. After decades of service here in the department, she achieved her dream job, and she was the fire chief. And I think that was one of the best decisions this city ever made. I mean, you had a trailblazer, trailblazer. She had her program to encourage young women to get into the fire service. I think she was a feather in your cap. And then I have to ask myself, why less than two years later, achieving her dream job, is she gone? And what does that mean for the city? And, and then you consider that she was three years from, from maxing out of retirement, and it wasn't a lightly taken decision. I spent 25 years, 26-ish, and retired from the fire service, so I know what that means. And I think the reason she left, and it's, it's more than hearsay, I've spoken with her, and she wouldn't tell you this herself, but I don't think she wanted to watch the dismantlement of her beloved fire department. And there's been some real substantive cuts, and I don't think she wanted to have to sit and justify them to the public. And so she walked away from a job that I know she loved, and I know she was proud to have, and I think that she was a trailblazer. And, and I think it's a loss. I think it's a loss to the city. And then I'd like to just remark for a second on what brings people to El Segundo. And there's a couple big things, banners that we stake our city on. And one of them is our schools, and one of them is our public safety. And trust me, I don't want to, I mean, this is the second time I've been in this chamber in three weeks, and my poor wife is going, oh my God, you're not running again, right? I just saw Mr. Hensley, and he goes, by God, you know, three times in two weeks, and it's been 15 years? I go, no, not running for anything. All I want to do is drink coffee and coach Babe Ruth. I don't want to come back here and keep bothering you guys, but this is something that I knew I'd regret if I, if I didn't come and talk to you about. And I don't expect to agree with you guys every time. We had this conversation before you, before you ran, Councilmember Giroux. If I wanted to agree with a councilman every time, I'd run again. You guys are gonna make your best judgment. I think maybe there's something you haven't considered. In this particular appointment, of course you need an interim fire chief. I'm assuming that you guys all know that he, he walked away from Manhattan Beach after he got a vote of no confidence from the Manhattan Beach firefighters. I've been in the industry decades. I've never heard of that happening before. And this isn't a remote department. Manhattan Beach, as we all know, is next door. They run calls with these guys. They go into house fires with them. They're their brothers and sisters in arms. Okay, this is, as you know, because God knows, we've been talking a lot about mutual aid as we make cuts here. Those are the guys that are gonna be coming in. We go into their city. And for you to take a guy that their, their brother and sister firefighters had no confidence in, and this is a guy already drawing a pension, and, you know, to pay him $18,000 a month to come here and take over your fire department, I don't think you realize, maybe you don't, that that, to your, your firefighters, it's just gonna feel like one more kick in the teeth. Yeah, you gotta fill that spot. It doesn't have to be him. Okay? It doesn't have to be him. He's drawn a pension. He's done fine. He walked away. He walked away after his firefighters had no confidence in him. If he's not good enough for the firefighters in Manhattan Beach, I don't think he's good enough for your firefighters here in El Segundo. So throw him a bone, maybe. Show him you do still support them, and that you do still have their backs. And by the way, I haven't spoken to anybody on the fire department. I have not, I'm not here for anybody but a guy that owns a home on Bungalow and wants the best for the city. I want to make that clear, too. So, thank you for your time. And again, I do appreciate your service. I know what it means. You could all be home with your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bulgaretti.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Boils. My name is Brian Sweeney. I live in Manhattan Beach and work in El Segundo. I am the co-founder of Esmoa. Esmoa is a 501-3C nonprofit museum located at 208 Main Street, at the south end of Main Street. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and to ask the council for financial support. Esmoa opened its doors 10 years ago with a new building where there used to be a vacant alley. Esmoa has become an important member of El Segundo's and LA's community. Esmoa is the only art museum in the surrounding area. Esmoa has curated 43 experiences, welcomed over 130,000 visitors, taught over 15,500 students, many of them coming from El Segundo schools, featured over 850 artists, offered over 14, 1,700 programs, and hosted 52 artists and residents. We have done this all with a very small team of four paid full-time employees. Each year, the Otis College Report on the Creative Economy highlights the tremendous impact and influence of the creative sector on the state and regional economy. It is no secret that where the arts go, there follows economic success. In order to create Esmoa, I have donated $4 million in cash, built a brand-new building, and I provide the building rent-free for Esmoa. My wife Ava Sweeney and her brother-in-law Bernard Zunkler work for free as a director and curator. We have fundraised over $1.3 million in cash. We have received in-kind donations in the amount of over $200,000. The total amount of this investment amounts to $10,400,000 over the past 10 years, a gift to the city. Esmoa has been featured in newspapers, magazines, TV, documentaries, online blogs, and El Segundo was mentioned in every article. The media value is worth over $40 million. We are a positive marketing generating machine for the city, another gift to the city. I'm asking city council for immediate financial support for Esmoa, and also for the two other brick-and-mortar nonprofits in town, the Automotive Driving Museum and the Old Town Music Hall. Without financial support, these three amazing institutions will die. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Angie Hogan and James Moll.
Hello, hello. Thank you for giving us a few minutes to speak on behalf of Old Town Music Hall. My name's James Moll. This is Angie Haugen. Angie is a retired LAPD officer. I'm a documentary filmmaker. We're also two volunteers for Old Town Music Hall. For those of you who may not know, Old Town Music Hall has been in this city for 100 years. Well, the building has been here for 100 years, but it's been Old Town Music Hall for 55 years. Everybody there is a volunteer, all of us. And we show classic films, because it was originally a silent movie theater. We have a Mighty World at Sir Pipe organ, and we have silent films and concerts. So that's a little bit about what we do.
And since 2021, when we reopened after the pandemic, we've really been enjoying a resurgence of popularity in the, in the community. And that's really because the families in town are really supporting us. We had, you know, during the closure, we were closed for 18 months. We had families and community members came through and helped us with donations, and we paid the rent all the way through the pandemic, which was, which was hard for us. It was really hard, but we did it. So, so we're really thrilled that, that we had that, that community support. We, we've, you know, we've been stable. We've been here for 55 years. We've been open every weekend, but we have had some challenges along the way. In 2020, we lost our founder, Bill Field, who had run the theater for over 50 years. But he left it, he left the theater in a, in the hands of a group of dedicated volunteers, and we've all stepped forward. And, you know, our, our hope is to continue the theater for another 50 years, and more. We, we oftentimes serve as, you know, the El Segundo Community Auditorium. You know, in addition to our shows that we do on the weekends, we have dance studios that come in and do programs. You know, a lot of the local music schools have nowhere else to have their recitals at the end of their year. They have the wonderful opportunity of having these young students play on a nine-foot Bozendorf grand piano, which is sort of an experience that's unparalleled for a young musician. And we're always, our doors open, and we're always happy to, to be involved in the community. It's really our honor to be part of the community in that way.
Of course, a nonprofit like this can't exist without contributions. The $12 ticket price alone doesn't really cut it for us. We do have support from some local businesses and from a lot of individuals. A lot of people assume the city of El Segundo either owns or supports or is a major part of Old Town Music Hall. So we're hoping that that can become a little bit more the case. You know, as, as it is right now, we have our, our calendar, and on the back, we have the Chevron logo, and we proudly state that Chevron supports the theater. We would love to have back there as well, the city of El Segundo supporting Old Town Music Hall.
So actually, we, we invite all of you to come to a show. You know, many of you may have been here during your third grade field trip, because since the 1970s, we have brought every third grader through the front doors of Old Town Music Hall, and it's a tradition that we're proud of and we continue to this day. So please come and see a show, and thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
And then we have Chris Haugen, Haugan, on behalf of Richard Crockswell.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm here to speak for Richard Crockswell. Crockswell, he was a board member for the Zimmerman Automotive Driving Museum. Unfortunately, last minute, he wasn't able to come here. I assume everyone knows what this is, at least as a car enthusiast I do. It's very significant for Southern California. It's a private automotive museum, and it's the only one where you can drive the cars. They have volunteers that drive three people, three cars on the weekends, and so it's the only museum where you get to touch the cars and drive them. It's very significant. It has a beautiful collection of Packards. So this is the place you want to go to if you want to see Packards. And if you watch, if you haven't been to the museum, if you watched the Rose Bowl Parade, all of those cars are theirs. So unfortunately, let me get back to the notes. I'm supposed to say that there is, from in 2022, there were 31,860 attendees. They had 71 events, and they had 117 facility rentals. And if you know anything about cars, you know about this place. And then I'll just jump to the last paragraph, and it says, "Our needs for outstanding funding has become critical since our founder and principal sponsor Stanley Zimmerman passed away last year, and all of his financial support has terminated at that time. At this point, we are facing an unsustainable financial future unless we are able to replace the funding once provided by Mr. Zimmerman. We would certainly appreciate any and whatever financial assistance the city could provide." I do think it's a great resource. People come to this from all over just to see it. It'd be a shame to see it go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, last call for public comments. Seeing none. I want to make one comment before I turn it over to you, to ask you, there was a suggestion that maybe a vote of no confidence is unprecedented, yet since I've been on council the last seven years, it's happened several times. We had union groups make a vote of no confidence of our fire chief, not Chief Lee, but the one prior. And we also had a union group make a vote of no confidence of our city manager. In fact, a couple of union groups. I just want to clear the air on that one. Did you have anything else to add, Mr. George?
Sure. I would just like to add that I did have conversations with previous city managers in Manhattan Beach during this time, as well as the mayor of Manhattan Beach during this time also. And the feedback I received from them was, was outstanding in terms of the, the, the role that Mr. Espinosa played, as well as his competency. And yes, there were issues, like I think any fire department has, but my conversations with them assured me that he can certainly do this job on an interim basis.
Thank you. Anything from my colleagues? No. Okay, we're on to item A, procedural motions. Oh, Mr. George, Hyperion, you want to do that now or later? Yeah? Okay.
Actually, I've been asked, mayor and council, to stand at the podium on these updates, which I've been doing now for roughly seven months. As you know, lots of progress has been made, and I actually enjoy doing these now, so as long as we can keep the momentum going. Regarding the legislation, AB 1216, as you know, we've been working with Assembly Member Marasucci's office on this bill. And in fact, myself, the Mayor Protem Pimentel, and Councilmember Baldino went to Sacramento on Monday this, last week, to appear before the Natural Resources Committee Assembly hearing on AB 1216. Spent the entire day up there, very productive, though. This bill, just as a reminder, would require Hyperion to test the air quality at their fence line for H2S, NOCs, and VOCs, which they're currently not doing, other than the H2S. Happy to say that the bill passed the committee, excuse me, and is currently with the, with the Assembly Appropriations Committee, which focuses on the cost of the bill. So it is a lengthy process that we'll go through. So we're probably looking at a six, a minimum of six-month process, but it is moving in the right direction. And in fact, while we were up there, we met with one of the top lobbyists in, in the state of California, Gonzales and Sons, and we retained their services for them to help us kind of champion this bill through the process, as it works its way through all of the committees and appropriations, and ultimately gets to the floor for, for a full vote. Since April, excuse me, I apologize. Since April 18, AQMD has received 24 odor complaints, 16 of which were filed by the same person. No NOVs have been issued for public nuisance or odor since January of 20, of this year. However, an NOV for violations relating to flare equipment was issued on April 18. The next AQMD hearing board is scheduled for June 20. An agenda for that hearing is forthcoming, and all of that information will be posted on the city's website. From May 7 through May 14, Hyperion will be performing its annual scheduled maintenance activities that may cause flares that are permitted by AQMD. The Perimeter Road Project, another project that we've been keeping an eye on, is 85% complete. Saturday work will now begin this weekend, and will take place from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. throughout May to ensure project completion sometime this summer. Minimal construction noise is anticipated from these activities, and we will keep an eye on them to make sure that they meet the summer date of completion. Hyperion continues to share monthly AQMD report updates on the status of their odor mitigation efforts and other ongoing projects directly with our staff, as well as our expert, Dr. Michael Stenstrom. We've invited Dr. Stenstrom to, to one of our meetings. He will be here on June 20 to provide an update on his, his efforts. He's had excellent communication with the staff over there at Hyperion, and we're very pleased with his efforts so far. And then finally, the Hyperion Ad-Hoc Committee, we have been meeting on a weekly basis, Councilmember Persak and Councilmember Baldino, as well as our communications manager, Diane Chabon. And those meetings have been very productive in terms of keeping us focused on getting out the information on a timely basis, accurate information that we are basically pumping out on all of our social media platforms. That is it for the update. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Item A, procedural motions. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do you have a motion to do so? So moved? Thank you. Do you have a second?
Persak, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. We are going to, we're gonna do consent, but before we do, I just want to mention that we're gonna move item 12 up to be right after item 7. So, on consent, are there any polls? Do we have a motion to approve consent?
Persak.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Giroux. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Okay, we're on to item 7.
Mr. Mayor, could we possibly do, I know this was added to the agenda, but the appointment of the interim?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Which is on, was on the first, the second page of the agenda, or the third page.
Okay, so this was, that's not it. That's the CFO. That's okay. Yeah, can you just read it for me, Madam Clerk, please? Or Darrell, you want to read it?
This item is a temporary appointment of a CalPERS retiree, Robert Espinosa, as fire chief pursuant
fire chief pursuant to Government Code Section 7522.56 and 2122, 21221H. Uh, this recommendation includes the adoption of a resolution authorizing the temporary appointment of CalPERS retired annuitant Robert Espinoza as fire chief in compliance with Government Code Sections 5, 7522.56 and 21221H. Also to approve the attached employment agreement with Robert Espinoza for the interim appointment to the position of fire chief and alternatively discuss and take other actions related to this item. Our HR director, Rebecca Reddick, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Rebecca Reddick, HR Director. The item that you have before you tonight, um, is to approve the temporary employment agreement for the interim fire chief. We have a similar agreement, um, as well tonight for an interim CFO. Because the appointment of the interim is a CalPERS retired annuitant, CalPERS requires that you approve the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Uh, just a few words about, uh, Mr. Espinoza. Retired Fire Chief Robert Espinoza has over 40 years of fire service experience, the last 15 years as a chief officer. Bob was a battalion chief for the city of Long Beach for three years and an assistant chief for two years. He was a fire chief for 10 years before retiring as the fire chief for Manhattan Beach in April of 2018. Bob has a special connection with the city of El Segundo since he joined the El Segundo Fire Department four days after his honorable discharge from the US Army in 1978. He worked for the El Segundo Fire Department for three years before leaving for the Long Beach Fire Department. As fire chief, he's participated in both city and department strategic plans, prepared and presented annual budgets, negotiated employment contracts, purchasing contracts, automatic and mutual aid agreements, resource sharing agreements, and many more. He was a Manhattan Beach Rotarian for six years on the executive board of the League of California Cities and a graduate and elected board member of Leadership Manhattan Beach, while also being the president of the South Bay Police and Fire Memorial Foundation and served on several other executive boards related to his fire service leadership. His broad experience and expertise in diverse assignments and experience at all levels of his fire service career makes him an expert in many areas which we would look towards to maintain our excellent service. He brings a full spectrum of knowledge to advise and make recommendations to city staff and the council on complex issues. And lastly, he's dedicated to helping the city and working with us to find a quality professional ready for the permanent fire chief position. Um, with that, I'd like to see if, Bob would like to say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor Boils, uh, council members, and thank you for that introduction, um, Mr. George. Uh, it's been a wonderful 40-year career. Uh, every assignment, rank, position has been a great educational learning experience for me. As you may know, the job of the fire chief has certainly evolved over from the days when you were judged by your operational prowess or your ability to put fires out. But today's fire service executive, executives must be administrators, organizational planners, finance professionals, system analysts, and experts in all facets of fire service delivery models, and the list goes on and on. I've been fortunate to work with and learn from, uh, some great civic business and community leaders and fire service leaders, and yes, even firefighters. As an experienced fire executive, uh, and, uh, city representative, there have been many challenges that have resulted in successes and sometimes setbacks. We fire chiefs accept public criticisms because we know not every decision is popular or decided by committee. When outcomes are positive, we credit others, and when they're the opposite, we accept consequences, and I imagine we'll hear some of those consequences this evening. Today's fire chiefs know that they will work, that they work for the city, for city management and with all city departments and not against them as in the past. Uh, to that point, uh, the, the value of including, uh, firefighters in a discussion and decisions cannot be overlooked or underappreciated. There will be times the fire chief can and will advocate for the firefighters, but we are not their advocates. Most of our time is spent on daily and routine management of the fire department. Ultimately, we serve at the direction of the city managers. I have had a discussion with Mr. George about my perceived differences between a contract city and a city that provides full services. I believe a city that contracts public safety services, uh, is involved in a trust relationship. Conversely, cities that are a full city and provide that service are in expectation relationship, far above what you expect from a trust relationship. In a trust relationship, there's hope and faith that things are going to be done. In an expectation relationship, you have expectations of goals that will be accomplished and accountability for the actions. I'm dedicated to meet or exceed those expectancies. They're ringing in the bells. And, um, and assist the city in finding a top-notch fire chief to replace, uh, myself in a full-time position. And I'm here if you have any questions or if I'm needed to come back before the vote.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Espinoza, appreciate that. Nice meeting you. Any questions from my colleagues?
No.
Thank you.
City manager, question for you. Have we started the recruitment process already for the full-time position?
I'll look to our HR director.
Yes, per CalPERS regulations, you have to be actively recruiting in order to approve a contract with an interim, and we do have a recruitment posted online with an executive recruiter and the flyer is, um, coming shortly.
Thank you. All right. City attorney, would you please read the resolution authorizing the appointment?
Well, can, let me ask, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
One more question. Just so everyone's clear of what's happening here, the reason why this is before the council is because the CalPERS requirement that we need to approve it because he's retired.
Correct.
And our role as council is we supervise our city attorney and our city manager, right? Mr. George, you've conducted an interview for an interment fire chief, correct?
Yes.
And you've done your due diligence and you've interviewed people and, and you believe in your judgment, this is the right choice for our city.
Yes, I do.
And you have a pretty good understanding of the discussions that council has in closed session and the direction that the council wants to go, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor and council, a resolution of the city council of the city of El Segundo appoint Robert Espinoza as interim fire chief in conformance with California Public Employees' Retirement System and State Law requirements is ready for adoption.
All right, we'd like to move approval.
Baldino, I'll move.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
Purstak, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero.
There's also the, uh, agreement that needs to be acted on.
Yeah, so there's an associated attached deployment, uh, employment agreement that is in our packet, so we need a motion to approve that as well. Baldino, so moves?
Thank you. Do you have a second? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is, make sure we're on the right track, item nine, right? Seven. That's right. I knew we had a feeling we weren't. Okay. So I think it's only fair, if we're going to have the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee come up, we should probably do Arts and Culture after that because these are volunteers. So we'll go, uh, item seven, item 12, item 11 in that order, and then with the remainder of the agenda, unless there's any objections.
We still have Economic Development Group, too.
Sorry, seven.
Yeah, seven. Seven, 12, then 11.
Fair enough.
Okay. All right, so, uh, let's hear, uh, on item seven, which is the update from El Segundo Economic Development Advisory Council.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our deputy city manager Barbara Voss will, uh, make this presentation or kick this item off.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, it's my pleasure to introduce this evening, um, the leadership team from the El Segundo Economic Development Corporation. As you know, um, the El Segundo EDC is a private nonprofit organization, um, that was created to guide and provide advice to the city and city council regarding economic development in the city. Uh, tonight we have Eric Chan, who is the chair of the ES EDC, and he's also the CFO of the LA Clippers. Uh, we have Al Keha, uh, vice chair of the ES EDC, and also former chair of the city's Economic Development Advisory Council. And then Daniel Martin is the secretary for the ES EDC, and he is also, uh, the president of a communications firm, Palucci Salling and Martin's, Martin Communication Arts. And also, uh, very pleased to have Carol Hamilton here. Uh, she is the president of acquisitions and the West Coast headquarters for L'Oréal, who's a new member of our business community. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the EDC.
Council members, Mayor Boils, uh, thank you this evening for giving us the opportunity to speak, uh, give you the annual update, uh, for our progress as the EDC. Um, as Barbara mentioned, um, you know, we're, we're up to a lot of good things. We want to kind of present our progress. Uh, we hope that today you can, you know, listen with your continued open hearts and mind in terms of some of the progress that we have done, some of the feedback that we have, and some of the requests, uh, that are forthcoming. Uh, we do have a special treat today. Uh, Daniel Martin will be doing the presentation, um, and, uh, Carol will be actually giving some remarks afterwards. So, uh, with that, Dan.
Council members, Mayor Boils, um, as you know, um, the ES EDC, um, has been working with the partnership of some of what I consider to be the great brands, some of the great companies of El Segundo, and we've had, um, the distinct honor of having time with the Board of Governors and leadership of these companies to really outline and be able to bring forth a communications package, um, that's, that's outlined around the ideas of, you know, what will it take for these companies to go to the next, uh, generation of success? How will these companies find, um, their next big idea? How can they really fulfill the mission that, uh, El Segundo has placed in front of, uh, the world, which is the city where big ideas take off? And it's with that in mind that we kind of come here today as a bridge for communication. Um, the ideas and the programs that we've been working on that have been shared prior to this time, we've been making great progress, um, through the volunteer work of, uh, Al and Eric, as well as through the Board of Governors and Board of Directors. Um, as you guys know, the continued prosperity of the city is at the, the heart of our mission. Um, but in order to achieve that mission, um, the ES EDC's Board of Governors really felt that the continued focus on employee recruitment and retention for the next generation of big ideas, uh, was really at the forefront. And how does this start to take shape? Well, I think it takes shape in the idea of, uh, understanding what they believe to be some of that next leadership. And then it's a more diversified tech-forward base, a, a generation that will provide long-term sustainability and growth, that meets the demands of the future employees in the heart of ES EDC3, ES EDC's three active initiatives. And those three active initiatives really take to heart kind of the changing demographics that aren't just in El Segundo. These are changing demographics that are faced across Southern California as a whole with an aging workforce and the opportunity to really identify the next leaders and, um, idea generators. We believe that through these three priority initiatives, we can address that mission. And we kind of broke them apart here for you guys today with our update and an ask for you to understand, and it's a basis of lifestyle amenities, the DEI efforts that have been occurring, and expanded housing opportunities. To start with, um, we've made tremendous progress in listening to the businesses that make up our Board of Governors' efforts to really identify what they believe to be the key to a successful DEI program for businesses specifically. We want to reach out and have continued to reach out through the efforts of the ES EDC to underserved high school students in and around the El Segundo area. How can we introduce new students to the successful businesses that are really shaping the world in El Segundo? One of those efforts was coordinated on September 29th. Thirty students organized through the LA Promise Fund, brought in on behalf of the ES EDC through the ES EDC's membership, three company campus tours from Textile, Aerospace, and Mattel, who all make up, uh, board members on the DEI committee, to introduce career opportunities, to introduce sort of the potential for understanding what is happening in the El Segundo businesses. On November 30th, we continued sort of towards this effort with the EDC, ES EDC hosting a DEI mixer for local businesses. This was considered a paramount mission to, instead of having multiple DEI programs for multiple businesses throughout the city not communicating to each other, how can we bring them together, share common ground, find ideas, and the mixer really was at the forefront of that to meet, greet, have discussions, and push some of their efforts forward on behalf of the various team members, uh, in this particular, uh, location at Mattel. So today, we're here kind of a very sort of straightforward, uh, and, um, hopeful that the, the city will kind of respond positively to the idea of just continued communication by the city around the programs and the efforts the city is doing, while the ES EDC continues to support and promote business-specific efforts around the more diversified workforce. This is the mission that the Board of Governors sort of set forth for us, to include this at the forefront of the business interest, and we hope that you will continue to communicate with us from the council's perspective on these efforts. Our second update for you, Lifestyle Amenities and Connectivity Progress Update. Um, at the forefront of this, as Eric probably shared a year ago, is what we're calling the Greenway Project. Um, there may be a lot of ideas around what the Greenway Project was prior to this time, different groups having different interests from Del Air, et cetera. Um, the ES EDC has really taken this on and moved it forward in a way that we think is in the best interest of the city of El Segundo and its businesses. So this is the area, south of Imperial, along Aviation Boulevard, up to El Segundo Boulevard. Immediately adjacent is the LA Metro Station, uh, that is part of the First and Last Mile Program, uh, within, um, LA Metro's purview. One of the great things that occurred is, and, and for someone who took a long time to get married, just getting a call back sometime is a really good sign that you're headed in the right direction. We got BNSF to answer the phone and talk to us. So BNSF is the railway line that leases the railway along the Greenway, uh, potential area, and we ultimately met with, received a letter of support around track relocation and exploratory opportunities with the Greenway. From that point forward in January, we coordinated and led meetings between BNSF, LA Metro, and ES EDC leadership team around the next steps at L'Oréal's offices. On March 2, 2023, ES EDC hosted the Metro Active Transit Meeting at L'Oréal with 25 attendees to talk about what was happening in Metro Station immediately adjacent. Um, and on March 2023, additionally, we have met with BNSF's and Metro's team around grant options, grant applications, and using their grant writers, of which they've offered all of their services, uh, to us. And in April 2023, so this is last month, the ES EDC on, at their expense, has contracted, uh, the services of Rio's Design to prepare preliminary art direction and design around, uh, potential for what the Greenway might look like, that will ultimately open up the conversation around costs and maintenance, um, to align with the grant applications. Our request of city council today, continued support of select city staff resources when proposed, as well as acting as the applicant for future grant submissions, when and if ES EDC staff identify funding opportunities. So the ES EDC is doing all of the legwork. We will identify the grant opportunities. We will work with BNSF and Metro to move all of those forward. Our hope is that you would act as the applicant because under the conditions of the applications for these grants, ES EDC does not qualify, uh, as a grant applicant. And our third initiative that we wanted to bring up to date for you, for the team here today. Um, we know that there's a lot of, uh, relationship around ideas and challenges and state regulations in, in, in the world of housing. Um, the ES EDC wanted to take a look at what the world of housing might look like, very specifically from the business perspective of things. Um, the ES EDC contracted the Concord Group, um, through our funds, um, to conduct a study around strategic analysis for residential development east of El Segundo. Um, the study had some very basic takeaways, um, beyond the depth of, of 100 pages of details, of which, you know, uh, we'll talk about in a second here, but the 98% of this tax budget, um, for the city being derived from businesses, i- it, there was a very clear, um, corollary to that, um, that the Concord Group set aside, which is, in order for businesses to attract the best and brightest, one of the key factors in choosing where someone will go to work in their business. someone will go to work in their business relates to attainable housing solutions. They also identified that 84% of the jobs created in 2021 in El Segundo were well-tailed to rental housing options. And additionally, they provided context to what can be considered a win-win for strategic housing opportunities with businesses in the city as large. They provided sample case studies of commercial slash industrial land in both Irvine and Anaheim that was set aside and rezoned potentially for residential offerings that led to an increase in business tax, an increase in employment that led to an increase in business taxes. So these case studies in Irvine and Anaheim were very interesting. So our asks today of the City Council, ensure that future strategic planning sessions focus on housing east of PCH and incorporate business feedback. Consider the immediate importance around this topic for ongoing retention and recruitment. So very, you know, clearly the understanding that the housing is a conversation that is happening for the businesses, and we wish to be considered potentially in all of those conversations. And the opportunity to have a cooperative review of any city-initiated studies on housing in partnership with ESECD's Concord Group study, to drive the discussion forward with shared ideas around housing opportunities. So a very collaborative, you know, conversation around what we've learned, how it aligns, how it doesn't align with what the city is sort of doing. Ultimately, and I'll hand it over to Carol at this point, you know, we're two years in with the discussions with the Board of Governors. They've given us a tremendous amount of input from some of these top companies in El Segundo. You know, they want to find ways to grow El Segundo's business base. They want to find ways to continue to be successful here. They are very focused on the potential of how that future talent pool will take shape here, and how they can best be a part of this conversation. And ultimately, it leads us to a larger discussion about how these initiatives really define what we believe to be El Segundo's, you know, next chapter. How could we start to look at El Segundo from this perspective of a new way to work and live in this city? What is the next big idea going to be about how El Segundo grows and evolves? And to help sort of share some of those notes, Carol's here. Carol?
Good evening. It's an honor to be here. It's nice to see you, Mayor Boils, again. It's really a fantastic night for me. I was really fascinated with this opportunity. So we opened our doors in, on August 23rd at a fantastic ceremony when we first decided to house L'Oréal on the West Coast in El Segundo. The, it was during the pandemic, it was October 2020, and we had a plan to move in three brands and about 300 employees. We built out the warehouse and turned it into a place where employees want to come to work. And since then, we are huge supporters and advocates of El Segundo as a, as a location for L'Oréal headquarters. What you need to know is that we are all about growth, and we intend to bring a lot more growth into El Segundo. Since we opened our offices, we have acquired two more companies, and our residents, we call our employees residents, have risen to 500. And we are investigating several more companies to acquire, because the beauty industry really is, the most important place in the world for the beauty industry is California, and we want to capitalize on that and really build a beauty capital here. And you probably know that there are many other beauty companies that are creating a little nucleus of beauty competitors, whether it's Rare Beauty, or House by Lady Gaga, or Cosas. And we're all creating this community that wants to bring events here and really support the population of El Segundo. The values of L'Oréal really, I think, align so well with what is being presented here. First of all, we are very much a proponent and have dedicated in our value system to really fight climate change, and to be one of the forefront companies to make sure that we address that in everything that we do. We have such aggressive programs planned with L'Oréal for the Future, which is our program, that has KPIs to bring us to 2030. They're so ambitious that we don't know if we can make them. They're not slam dunk, but we're very dedicated to anything associated with addressing climate change. So the Greenway Project is something that we're very excited about and want to support, because we believe in that for the communities, and also, we know that it will help make our L'Oréal residents a lot more happy here as well. We also really believe in diversity. To be a vibrant beauty company, and really any company today, you need a diverse workplace. We are studying the population. We believe our population here should mirror that of Los Angeles. Right now, the population in Los Angeles, I'm sure you know, is 49% Latinas. Our population in L'Oréal West is only 18% Latinas. And our, one of our major programs and absolute commitments is to diversify our workforce and to give a lot of opportunities to bring Latina community into L'Oréal, especially given opportunities for employment of younger, of younger people. And we're starting major, major programs on that. But the message that I want to give to you is that we are all about growth. Our residents are back in the office. We have a mandate to have them back in the office. So if you think that office is sitting empty, and that what's the big deal, it absolutely is vibrant. I'd love for you to come and visit and see what has happened there. We are also really starting to create community involvement of all the businesses around our site, because we think that's another opportunity to really bring vibrancy to this community. But we intend to build our, really our second headquarters, not only for our business in the U.S., but it has become a major international attraction for so many L'Oréalians. We support, or we hire 86,000 people around the world. So if you compare 86,000 to the 500 that we now are employing in the El Segundo area, we want to make this a major, major center of beauty, and a center that supports the community that it's in. And we're all about bringing growth and economic prosperity to El Segundo. So thank you. Thank you for your support.
So thank you for the time. Again, invite any sort of questions or comments. Obviously, you know, we had some ideas on kind of ways that we can continue to collaborate and work together. Again, these are the big ideas that our Board of Governors have asked us to kind of continue to work on, and hopefully, you know, you'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chan. And thank you all of you. Any comments or questions?
Thank you all. As you put in your slide, your economic prowess is why we are able to live in such a small community and have the services that we have. So we are very much aware of the importance of our corporations. I did want to ask you about DEI. You said you wanted to increase the communication with the city. How is the city communicating with your group now? Is there a liaison? Does someone go into meetings? What is that relationship like, and how can we make that better for you?
Yeah. So right now, you know, we're having meetings with Mr. George, and just to kind of keep him updated on kind of, you know, things that are going on from our end. You know, as Daniel mentioned earlier, our DEI initiatives are more focused on basically diversifying the workforce. And so, you know, probably a little bit separate than kind of some of the DEI efforts that are going on with the city. But again, I think a lot of it is just about open communication, make sure that both sides are knowing what each other are doing, and where there's opportunities to actually find synergies, or opportunities to kind of expand the PR of what's going on within, you know, the city. You know, we're certainly all ears and, you know, at your discretion.
Okay, thank you. And then for the green line, I know that's been kicking around for a while. It sounds like your group is taking the laboring oar now. What do you need from the city besides helping you with these grants? This is not city-owned land, right?
No, the land is owned by LA Metro. It is under a lease and being used by BNSF. So BNSF has committed to releasing that lease and handing the land back to LA Metro, and that's sort of where the collaborative meetings have been occurring up to this point, and reallocating track for BNSF. They do still need that track. They've had identified two or three locations that they're working with LA Metro. I think in terms of the, beyond the potential to act as the applicant, certainly, you know, continued, for the last six months, it hasn't really required us to sort of go and knock on the door of staff and say, hey, can you hand us this map or anything like that? But I think there are opportunities for us to certainly ensure that the city is at the forefront of discussions with Metro. For example, the mat event that we held and hosted, that would have been, I think, a great opportunity to have city representation at, as they are looking at that particular station as being, I think, you know, one of the most critical as they enter into planning with the LA, excuse me, the Olympics. So I think just cross coordination of ensuring what's happening on the west side of aviation is in line with the east side. Ultimately, there is a conversation that would need to be had as to if the Greenway was to progress, how the integration of the landscape design would work together. And that is something that's been kind of brought up, and LA Metro is aware of, as well as Rio's Design, who's kind of progressing with their plans.
Okay. And then, would it be possible if I got a copy of the Concord Group study? I'm just curious to read it. You don't have to give it to me, but I'm kind of a nerd about these things. I would like to see it.
Yeah, I think our hope was to certainly have kind of a discussion together all around it. But the study as it exists right now, you know, I think it's available for distribution to council for their eyes. I think what we found right away as we reviewed the study is, you know, there's a lot of different sort of perceptions around, it should be this number, it should be that number. We didn't want to come here with the statement as to, this is what the Concord Group believes needs to be sort of hit as it relates to residential numbers, more so that if the idea of residential planning specifically is the businesses are interested east of PCH as part of ongoing strategic planning discussions by the city, that we would consider that a really, a great step in the right direction.
All right, thank you.
Let me jump in for just a second. I think that it's important that people understand that our Economic Development Group before, EDAC, and the Economic Development Corporation are two different things, or sort of two different egeses. So as a standalone 501(c)(3), you have a lot more freedom to give land use recommendations and things than we would in a normal economic development, city-sanctioned body. But I think clearly what we see here is that we've lost a little bit of coordination on some of these things. We certainly, you know, the aviation statement, the station, is something that we spend a lot of time on, because as you said, it is a huge nexus. Which way the trains will route as they connect either to the Crenshaw Line or go directly to Artesia is a massive issue and source of discussion. And unlocking Measure M subregional equity funding, which would absolutely fund the Greenway, is something the city can advocate for at really no cost to you. So to make sure that those things are aligned, those are things that we should absolutely coordinate on. Because it doesn't, like I said, this is, the fact that you have gotten a railway to answer the mail is, I mean, you could have told me I got drafted by the Cowboys last week, and I would have believed that beforehand. I mean, we have, we have knocked on that door enough that our knuckles are off. So I applaud you for that. I would be very curious about what other amenities could be missing over there. Certainly, it's starved for sort of the classic chicken and egg argument, where there's not enough footfall at the businesses right now to stimulate sort of the service economy around it. But then again, it's hard to get people to come in there if there's not enough services. So if there's things that we need to do as far as zoning and conditional use permits, we're looking at those things. I mean, we just approved microbreweries over there, so that's a step. But those are the sorts of things that we have and we can affect directly to build that amenity base. Also, though, on the coordination piece, when it comes to diversity, right, we work with the Workforce Investment Board all the time. And so some of the very businesses you would be talking to, especially in the aerospace side, are dealing with programs through the WIB for pipelining and training and apprenticeships all the time. That could be very helpful to coordinate that piece, to really get those lines of diverse applicants in. But those are my things, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamilton, can I ask you a question directly?
Sure.
I think you gotta go up there, though. Everybody has to listen. I'm gonna ask you a loaded question.
Yeah.
So hopefully you give me a loaded answer.
Sure.
What is the biggest challenge facing your business right now as far as employees
There's not one. I don't know where you want me to go.
So it's not really where I want you to go. I'm looking up there. So my understanding is, and this is kind of a rally cry throughout the east of PCH, is that attainable housing has become a major issue for employee retention and attraction into this area. Do you see that as a problem? Because the new workforce coming out now, let's say in the next five years, is very different from the current one, and expectations, things that they want. DEI obviously is part of it. Lifestyle connectivity is part of it. But the attainable housing piece, everything that we have been told is probably the biggest roadblock that we have right now.
I would agree with you.
Because you have a lot of employees come in. You have, you saying that you have everybody come in and mandated, that is a rarity. I applaud you for that. I am praying that that is what businesses go back to again.
I think they will. There's no choice.
The creative economy needs it.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so I didn't mean to leave the witness like that, but thank you for that. In the end, I, great report. I appreciate the way you've all gone about this. When we, one of your asks is the discussion, the taboo discussion of housing east of PCH. And it has been a taboo discussion for a very long time, but I do think the time has come to actually have that discussion. And the reason why I want to have that discussion is that currently, our business strategy for east of PCH, or it makes you a lot of commercial buildings, commercial real estate, creative office spaces, and the pandemic has basically thrown a big giant wrench in the middle of that. So as a result, while you're growing, most are not. Most are going the other way. As we talked about, leases are not being renewed, they're finding smaller spaces. We have a lot of open space over there, and I do not believe that is going to get any better anytime soon, unless five more of your company comes in here. So as a result, I think it's time that we have to look at pivoting, how we look at that going forward. I'm not suggesting that we build giant apartment complexes, but I'm saying that one of the major things for us to be able to continue to fill our general fund with the business license taxes is by being able to have you stay here. And the way we're able to have you stay here is, we have to be able to allow you to retain and attract employees. And a big piece of that is attainable housing. So I just believe as a, as a council that is in our best interest, I'm not saying to change our zoning, but to make it so that we can get out of the way a little bit, and let the creative people who know how to do this study what is actually possible and viable. Because I know one of the arguments is, we're gonna lose tax-based revenue. In the end, we got a bunch of empty office space, we're gonna lose that revenue anyway. So if we continue along the same lines, my concern is, is that we're just kicking this thing down the road, and it's gonna be too late to turn around. So I would be for figuring out how we can at least just study what is possible. Because even if we stepped out of the way, there still needs to be someone who comes in and says, oh yeah, I figured out a way to do this. I'm willing to invest in this. And right now, we don't have that at all. So one, out of your asks there, I do believe that is an important hurdle that we need to get over as a council, to begin studying what is possible. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this a receive and file, or are we giving staff direction at the conclusion of this?
It's a receive and file.
So I just have one.
Counselor, a person.
Yeah, so thank you, and I really appreciate you guys coming to present, and thank you for spending the time, especially you, Al, you know, giving your time for this. I did want to reiterate, as Mayor Proten mentioned, about the continued partnership. I know that there's been a period of time where we've kind of, have not been too much involved with what you're doing, and I think it's now time to re, come back in and make sure that there's more synergy between the city and your organization. And I think that partnership can really help us continue to move forward. I did have one question about the grant application process. If we become the owner of the grant, what does that, what is that responsibility, and what does that do to us? How does it tie us as a city if we become the grant writer? And I just want to make sure that we go into this with our eyes wide open, because we don't own that land, and we don't have, we don't have that responsibility of management of that land, and I just want to make sure that if we are the grant writer of the, for the applicant, what does that mean?
At this point, we don't really know. This would have to come back to a future council meeting for that decision. I think the point tonight was have a presentation about the matters that the group is working on, and that these different components will need to come back to the council for direction in the future. It's just a receive and file. I I need to look at what the grant Metro has or the different grants out there. I have all sorts of different potential strings tied to them and whatnot. I don't have any of that information at this point in time. And I, my understanding is it'll be coming forward in the future to staff for us to look at that.
Yeah, I know that one of the items we've discussed is actually setting up this meeting with Metro so that we can get answers to those questions. So that has not taken place yet.
I just want to make sure that we can, you know, we have, our eyes are wide open going into this and we all have a strategic plan of where we're going with this. And we can accommodate as much as we can, but I want to make sure we all, it's aligning to our vision and strategic plan for the city.
Quick aside, Dan Martin, I think it was eight or nine years ago when you were representing the city, when it was still EDAC and Al and I were leading EDAC. And you came up with Where Big Ideas Take Off, which is still amazing. And now we've transitioned to the most important five square miles economically in Southern California. So don't take it personally. It's just more compelling. And the beauty capital of the world is one of the reasons, one more data point why we're the most important five square miles economically in Southern California. Thank you.
Is there a congressional cosmetic lobby? Because we are, we do own the toy lobby. No, I'm serious. We are the, this is the headquarters of the toy lobby. If there's a cosmetic lobby, if we've got this many cosmetic companies, I'm just saying, let's get Ted on that. All right, thank you very much, in all seriousness. Appreciate it. All right, we're gonna, as we mentioned, we're gonna move up item 12. Item 12 is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, Community at Large Report. And Mrs. Voss, who's gonna report on this one?
Sorry, trying to do two things at once. Hey, good evening again, mayor, members of council. I just wanted to introduce the members of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, which was asked by city council when the DEI committee was formed to study the community at large. So tonight is the report on their research finding and their recommendations to city council. I just wanted to point out that when the DEI committee was formed, they were asked to study four areas. One was public safety. One was the local economy. The other was the citywide organization. And then this is the fourth one, the community at large. And they have completed now with this report those four assignments that were provided by council. So I'm excited about this milestone that the committee has reached and asked for your consideration and their recommendations and perhaps some guidance and direction on next steps for this committee and work product going forward. So with that, I'd like to introduce the chair, the new chair. Christabel Villena is here this evening. She and two of the DEI members, other DEI members are the Community at Large Subcommittee. The second member is Genesis Jackson, who is the vice chair. And then Avery Smith, who is the former chair of the DEI as well, and now he's a member. Christabel will begin. Thanks.
You're welcome. Hello. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Good evening, everyone. Happy Asian American history, oh, and Pacific Islander Month as well. And let's go Lakers. I know we're all missing the game as we meet here today. My name is Christabel Villena. I'm the newest chair of the city's DEI committee. I've worked in El Segundo for several years, starting in 2004. And I've been a resident. And I've been raising my two sons here for eight years. I have a senior at the high school and a sixth grader at OSS this week. Luckily, I also work remotely here in El Segundo as Director of Program Operations at Carrot, where we design and manage prize competitions, including a DEIA prize for the National Institute of Health, which I launched just last month. It's focused on recognizing diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility efforts at educational institutions around the country. So I wear many hats, including project manager. So I'm very excited to use my skills and experience as best I can to lead this committee. So as part of the city's DEI committee, I serve on both the Public Safety and the Community at Large Subcommittee. Joining us today is also Avery Smith, who has been a past chair of this committee and also served on the Local Economy and Community at Large Subcommittee. And last but not least, we have Genesis Jackson, who serves on the Community at Large Subcommittee and is now also the vice chair of our DEI committee. So, which one do I push? Okay, great. All right, so just a quick review of our agenda today. So I'll provide a refresher and some DEI committee highlights. I'll then hand things over to Avery, who will review important snapshots of our city's history. Genesis took the lead on reviewing census and survey data, so she will share her key findings there. And then we'll review a few examples of what other cities have done around DEI and close with our recommendations. And of course, open it up for questions from you. All right. So we developed this purpose statement as part of day-long retreats very early on of the DEI committee existence. And since then, it's been made clear that our committee has been directed to start as auditors. So we're collecting and reviewing past and current data and information, then reporting back to you all. So that really is the focus of this report. So just some highlights here. So we've been meeting monthly when we have quorum. I outlined here, you know, we have three original members, is what I'm calling them, that have been with the committee since October, since the start. I will note that attendance and turnover are very real challenges for our committee. We've had to cancel a handful of meetings in the last year or so because we did not have quorum. Until Genesis joined us earlier this year, Avery and I were the only members left of the Community at Large Subcommittee. We started with four members and we're down to two. And so as I noted earlier, we also serve on other subcommittees and as chair at different points. So we really do appreciate your patience as we worked on this final report for you all. So as a newly appointed chair, I've been having one-on-ones with committee members to gather feedback, identify their strengths and skill sets, and learn more about what we can do to increase efficiencies and help keep our members involved and engaged to help address some of the turnover we're experiencing. We do have two vacancies currently. And feedback I've heard so far has included providing more information on expectations of a committee member and allowing more time for each interview, such as 20 minutes. So look forward to also scheduling one-on-one time with each of you if and when you all are interested and available. All right. Some other key highlights. We did develop an offer, a let us know online form, where a few committee members have reached out to us directly to share an experience around their DEI-related issues. We have the survey, which I put up here with the QR code. Big shout out to Portland Bates, your former employee, who helped us kind of shepherd this through and to your creative team for designing these communications and, you know, offering this, setting up the QR code to make it really easy to participate. That said, our response rate to the survey is less than 3% of the population. We didn't even get 500 responses yet. We did just launch it in July, so it hasn't been quite a year. But we do want to see more participation, not just from residents, but also from people who work here. So I would love to, you know, work with other businesses located here to share the survey with their employees and give us, you know, additional data on their experience in El Segundo as it relates to DEI. And we appreciate the city. I know you've all been, you know, promoting the survey. We also have plans to kind of kick the promotions up a notch. And we're counting on you all for continued support there. So during our report today, we are still going to, you know, report on what we have, but just know that it's not, you know, statistically representative of El Segundo. And just a few photos here I'm sharing from our last two United Against Hate Week events, as well as a reminder that, you know, we did a panel discussion and a community dialogue with ESPD and aerospace. We've supported, you know, the cultural festivals that we've done here in the holidays. This is just a few of the things that we've done over the year. And then also, I had the fun opportunity of participating in the Girls Fired Up Camp. I got to climb the ladder and put on the gear. It was really fun and exciting. So, you know, this is something that we continue to do. You know, we continue to keep, maintain relationships with the chiefs. Christina Vasquez-Fajardo, our former chair, got to attend the camp last year. And I just wanted to note, I mean, Chief Lee is a gem. She'll be sorely missed. We cannot thank Chief Lee enough for her genuine commitment and efforts around DEI. She's a true champion of DEI. And we wish her all the best in her retirement and look forward to working with the new chief when they're ready. Another thing to note is that there is a new coalition, which I know the mayor is familiar with, the South Bay Community Coalition Against Hate. It includes the city of Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, school districts, community organizations. I've been participating on monthly meetings along with Barbara and Mayor Boils. And Avery was also enlisted to moderate an important community conversation that they hosted, I think it was just last week, at American Martyrs. It was with Frank Meek, who shared his story as a former white supremacist and his transformation from that. And then also, the LA Versus Hate is the organization that oversees United Against Hate. And they're also a member of the coalition. So looking forward to kind of coordinating efforts with this group in the coming year. They do a lot of events and activities already. And it seems relatively new. So with that, I'm going to hand things over to Avery to talk about history.
All right, good evening, everybody. So before I get started with the history, one of the things I wanted to do just really quickly is just kind of frame for the council why we structured the report the way that we did. The directive that we received was basically to take a look at the demographics of El Segundo today and why we feel that the demographics are as such, right? And so we felt it was very, very important to look at the history, to go ahead and analyze that. And so when we look at the history, right, it is not indicative of every racial group, every ethnic group, every religious group. It was really designed, again, to take a look at why the demographics are the way they are. And so I wanted to address that because I know there was a public comment that talked about the Jewish community specifically. But again, this was, again, report designed to really focus on, again, the demographics and take a look at why we are where we are today. And, you know, the last thing I want to say about that is, you know, when we address these issues that help to mitigate hate and increase the love, I think that helps everybody. And I will tell you that I personally learned that lesson from the Jewish community. So in my life, that is something that's been impressed upon me. So I would say, again, as we make progress, I think everybody will benefit from that. So with that, I will go into the history really quickly. When we look at, again, El Segundo's demographics, excuse me, the driving theme, certainly for the first 70 to 80 years of the city's existence, was redlining. And then, you know, even before I get into specifics, other specifics on redlining, I would want to say and just acknowledge, obviously, we are focused on the history of El Segundo as a city, right, as an incorporated city. We understand that certainly there was indigenous Native American influence and Spanish influence and Mexican influence, of course, before the city was incorporated, so was founded, excuse me. So I just wanted to go ahead. I think that's important to recognize that as well. So again, with that redlining, I think, I'm sure you are all familiar. But for those that are not, it is a term used to describe the practice of segregating cities or neighborhoods along racial or ethnic lines. And obviously, in Southern California, again, up until, I would say, the last 20 or 30 years, it was a very big influence on why communities had the racial makeup that they had. If we look at El Segundo, right, in the early days of the city, you know, when prospectors were looking at, you know, was El Segundo going to be redlined? There were three things that they had in consideration. One was the Hyperion plant, of course. The second was the burgeoning airport to the north. And then the third was going to be, what was going to be the diverse makeup of the city. And so if you were an El Segundo resident, you were basically encouraged to keep the city as white as possible, for lack of a better way to put it, in order to avoid the city becoming red, excuse me, redlined. And so that was something that, again, cannot underscore the influence enough. And so what happens when a community is redlined? You know, and we take a look at the communities in eastern and southern LA metro, it's much harder to get home loans, the default rate is higher, and much less a ratio of homeownership, which impacts future generations going forward. Because typically, in Southern California, as it is across the country, most people tend to live and spend the majority of their life around where they were born. So again, also reinforcing redlining was the use of real estate covenants. And this was obviously banned by the Fair Housing Act of 1968. But between, again, the founding of the city and 1968, these real estate covenants forbade homeowners when they were going to sell their home, to sell their home to African-American, a Latino, or a member of the Asian race. And so it was, again, another way to keep the neighborhood homogeneous. So again, that was our major finding. And again, when we talk about the influence of, or the lack of diversity in El Segundo for, again, its first 70 or 80 years. The second thing that we want to highlight in our report was a gentleman named Titus Alexander. And I'm sure the council is familiar with Bruce's Beach and Manhattan Beach. Titus Alexander was an entrepreneur from Los Angeles who wanted to create something similar in El Segundo. And he had a lot of resistance from folks in the town. And he was basically talked out of creating this beach resort that he wanted to create for African-Americans. And so this was something that, again, that we saw in the early part of the city's existence, that, again, dovetails with redlining to create this, again, this homogeneous environment. And then as we kind of skip forward into the World War II area, we see that there was a El Segundo resident, business owner, that erected a sign at the northwest corner of Oak and Main that advertised discrimination towards Jewish and Japanese Americans. And so, again, this is something that we see as very common. That was very common, unfortunately, in neighborhoods throughout Southern California during this time. So finally, right, as we kind of skip and fast forward to the present day, to talk about progress, I think the city has, certainly, as Genesis will show with her data, has made a significant progress with diversity. One of the things that we wanted to call out, though, is the experience of African-Americans in El Segundo with a documentary of Black and Mayberry, which I know many of you have seen, if not all of you. And I think it is very important. And it speaks to, to me, one of the things that I really love about this town, which is the mentality of see something, say something. And this was created by Tanya Taylor. And it brought together a group of African-Americans who shared their history here in El Segundo. And I think, you know, what I would emphasize is that we're sharing. Whenever anyone from a marginalized group shares their trauma, they are doing that in a way to give all of us the opportunity to help them heal. And so to me, the Black and Mayberry documentary speaks very well of our town that our African-American members of our community who participated wanted to give us the visibility and the opportunity to make things better here. So with that, I think I'm going to pass it over to Genesis.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. Okay. So for this report, I spent time digging through the census data to get a picture of the makeup of El Segundo now and in the past. And the actual report itself includes the charts and the graphs showing the population by race, gender, income, education level, et cetera. Gives a snapshot of where we were and where we're headed. Some of the interesting, you know, things, trends that we noticed. The population for El Segundo from 1920 to 1970 increased by 899%. From 1970 to 2020, or sorry, 2010, the population increased by 7%. And then from 2010 to 2020, the population only increased by 0.5%, though some of the year-to-year fluctuations were a bit higher. And this particularly was surprising with the increase in multifamily units built in recent years. Over the 7,000 households in El Segundo, only 41.9% are owner-occupied. Over the seven thousand households in El Segundo, only forty-one point nine percent are owner-occupied, despite the general feel that we're a city primarily of long-term established residents, we're in fact a city of renters. The median age, and that's up here, the median age for African-American residents in El Segundo in nineteen, excuse me, in twenty-ten, the median age was fifty years old. It was the highest of any demographic. And by twenty-nineteen, it had decreased to sixteen years old. African-Americans and those without school, older African-Americans and those without school-age children are leaving El Segundo. We are the only of the six cities surveyed in the area that has any race where the median age is a minor. El Segundo is, however, slowly, very slowly, becoming more diverse. The population of minority groups are climbing and the Caucasian population is the only demographic that is steadily declining. As mentioned, the charts and the, as mentioned, all the charts were in the report and we're continuing to further analyze this data to search for the why behind the findings. Another thing that I was tasked with was reviewing all of the survey responses. Of course, as mentioned, the percentage that we're at, you know, we can't do any of the, you know, give big percentages of responses to the, you know, multiple choice questions. But thankfully, a lot of the people who responded were kind enough to take the time to really write long, detailed, very thoughtful, helpful, you know, feedback to the open-ended questions. So read all four hundred and ninety responses from everyone. And all of the, of all the responses that we got, there were three themes that seemed to emerge of what was sort of, you know, most needed by the, by the community. We also used the feedback that we got from the times, the several weeks that we had to be without the farmers market meeting the community, the public comments from our meetings, and people, you know, reaching out to us for different issues, you know, that they were having. So of all the public feedback that we've been able to collect, the three themes that were most significant is, number one, was the need for community education. And it became very clear through these interactions, there's a significant need for community education in several DEI-related areas. The first is the value and purpose of DEI as a whole. Many community members do not understand our mission, it's important, or its importance and what the impact actually would be to their lives. Many are reacting from a place of fear and believing that supporting one group means rejecting another, and that's simply not the case. That's not, that's not why we're here. Even with, through conversations I've had with many differing opinions, once you are able to, you know, listen to their side, able to humanize a group that they might not, you know, be as familiar with, we've been able to bridge a lot of those gaps. And community dialogue and education, I think, is very needed, you know, for, for those. Another area of education that's needed is community members are in need of a clear definition of DEI. Obviously, anyone can Google the definition of DEI. But many community members are under the impression that the city is using a definition that is in contrast to the standard definition. As I, you know, I work in DEI, I've helped two businesses grow their DEI departments. And the thing that is, the phrase that keeps coming up is diversity of thought. And it sounds like, you know, a good idea, something we would include. But unfortunately, it's being twisted in the way of saying that the inclusion means including diversity of thought, which means including ideas that are very anti-DEI. And I feel it would be helpful to have that, not to say the city hasn't been clear in their messaging, but there is this very real sentiment that we are confronted with, not only in the community, but in our own DEI committee, with this idea of diversity of thought. Where opinions that are, you know, anti-LGBTQIA, that are, you know, anti-certain groups, that we need to take that into account and maybe not be as supportive of that group because these people aren't as supportive. And that's just not within the spirit of DEI. So I think that, that's, it would be very helpful for that to be cleared up with this, you know, sort of a statement from the city. Also, the role of the DEI committee, we have found that many people don't understand exactly what our role is, so that we get a lot of requests for either can you do these things or why haven't you done these things? Because they don't really understand what exactly our role is. And then the groups that are more anti-DEI focus on the committee and they sort of view a separation between the committee and the city. And are very anti-city while being very anti-committee is, you know, not quite understanding that the committee is something that was enacted by the city and is supported by the city. And then the last thing is, we get a lot of comments for DEI-related issues that occur within the school. And there's a lot of the, you know, community don't quite understand that there is that separation. Of course, we always, you know, help and lead them to the appropriate channels, want to make sure that they're heard and they get to who they need to go to. But, you know, there's a frustration with why hasn't the city done something about this? Not understanding that the school district needs to handle that. So including some of the comments for each theme, I have some survey comments. So for the anti-DEI and the, so for the need for community education, the comments are, "Our city is great. We are inclusive and don't need to have DEI. Stop with the DEI BS," not the word they used, "and leave our town alone. You are making a big deal for less than one percent of the population. Everything is fine with the city. The inclusion committee is not even necessary. Racism is something mostly made up by the media. Who cares? DEI is made of nonsense that has no use." So community education is definitely key. So the next theme was, that emerged from the community feedback, was a desire for more communication and city support for DEI initiatives as well as city-sponsored events. It's very clear that community members feel that it's not enough to allow a group to hold a DEI-related event, but just see the importance in having it be something that is city-sponsored, showing, you know, the city's support for it. So a few of the comments that relate to that topic. "Since I feel the city could communicate a stronger message of inclusivity by creating events that honor or celebrate the different cultures of our residents. In other words, I feel that the city needs to make a clear stance that all are welcome in El Segundo and that we will fight for the rights of all. If it is not clearly said and just implied as it is now, then someone will try to twist the meaning." So the, the third, sorry, I have asthma. I kind of ran here talking for this long. That would be great. That would be wonderful. Thank you so much. Perfect. Okay, so the third theme that we saw over and over again in the responses was the need for support for the LGBTQIA community. And, you know, I know that we light the, you know, we declare Pride Month and we light the Water Tower, which is fantastic. But our proclamation occurred twenty-two years after President Clinton declared the first Pride Month in June of nineteen ninety-nine. And there have not to date been any city-sponsored Pride-related events. There's currently no members of the LGBTQIA community in leadership positions nor on the DEI committee. And, you know, as, again, we've got several survey responses saying, you know, that they don't feel that many of the groups are being represented, especially the LGBTQIA community. "I work with and worry about our LGBTQIA and other marginalized youth and that we would love to see more Pride events in June." Okay, so that's our main three from our survey feedback. And then the last thing I was tasked with was looking at other communities and things that they are doing to, different DEI initiatives that they have, and looking at things that are very cost-effective and easily, easy to adapt and implement here, things where you could get a lot of visibility that are, you know, working with the resources and budgets, you know, that we would have. One example, which is a great one, is Huntington, West Virginia. They have their Open to All, sorry, yeah, Open to All campaign. "It actively promotes an inclusive environment for all people in the city of Huntington by encouraging all businesses, houses of worship, civic groups, and nonprofit organizations to take the Open to All pledge and maintain a safe and welcoming environment for all employees, customers, visitors, and vendors." And every institution that takes the pledge is featured on the city's website. And again, this goes across arts and culture, education, faith-based, food and beverage, government, legal, media. And then another one, and this is a similar idea, but this is for Jacksonville, North Carolina. This is a campaign that is, it's geared towards, more towards the residents. It initially was, it initially came out of conversations between the mayor and the faith organizations in Jacksonville. And then they included, you know, different city groups, different neighborhood groups, and, you know, to come and have dialogue to figure out what, how can each group commit to, you know, being one city, to making it better. And then they provide different, what's it I'm looking for? Like graphics that they can, you know, print yard signs, they have it in their windows, you know, so that people can publicly show their support. And in a city like El Segundo, you know, I know that means a lot when I'm walking around and I see, you know, and Love is Love or Black Lives Matter or a Pride flag, and, you know, just knowing that you are, you know, you're accepted here. So having some kind of campaign for the people and for the businesses to show their commitment to DEI, I think would be, you know, would be something that would be really, really helpful.
So I know I mentioned Bruce's Beach in my, let's see here, how do we go forward? Right there, okay. Oh, there we go. It's fine, okay. So I know we mentioned Bruce's Beach earlier. And one of the things that I have learned in El Segundo, especially coaching El Segundo Little League, is how much we go to war against Manhattan Beach. And one of the things that, that I am happy that Manhattan Beach is doing, but I certainly would like to see here as well. I feel like they are taking the lead in the beach cities as far as acknowledging the role of the city that they had played historically in regards to, you know, the displacement of African-Americans from their homes and the general environment of folks not feeling welcome. And so they've issued a formal apology for what happened with Bruce's Beach, but then just, just the kind of general atmosphere of the city. The city of Glendale also did this as well. The city of Glendale had signs that suggested that they were sun downtown, right? Which is basically, for those that are not familiar, a city where, you know, folks of darker complexion are not basically welcome after dark. So the city of Glendale issued that proclamation, I believe, three or four years ago, which was very powerful as well. So here's just an example of something that we think the council should consider to, to address some of the historical issues that have, that have been had, excuse me, in El Segundo. Who's next? Me again? Okay, all right. I'll stay up here. Okay. So, so recommendation number one, right, really kind of dovetails into what I was just saying before around Bruce's Beach. And I know many of you saw, you know, the video that I put out in two thousand and twenty, right? Right after the murder of George Floyd in regards to, you know, how does a city heal and how does a city move forward? And I talked about the pen and I talked about the sledgehammer. And I think that, you know, utilizing, you know, proclamations, but not just that. There are many, many different ways to encourage representation. You know, one of the things that, that I see in these chambers and, you know, right by our DEI meeting space is a, is a picture of all of the mayors, which shows a representation of the history of the city. I think there can be something done in regards to representation of folks of different groups as well that can be very powerful and very encouraging. I think the, the business presentation that was had just before ours, right, it talks about how do we encourage a more diverse workforce? You know, people that are interested in wanting to work here want to feel like they're welcome. And representation certainly is something that is powerful and that can do that and achieve that goal. So, just doing number two. All right, I'll just stand up here next to you.
We're tackling this last part. So with number two, this is related to, to training and online and resources and just making things available as part of, you know, addressing that concern around education awareness, right? Like people of color and underrepresented groups are more than one percent of the population here in El Segundo. So, you know, helping to, to, to inform community, to help build those bridges and make sure that, you know, there's just more empathy, more understanding. And this can be from, you know, training for city council, for city staff, larger community. And Barbara's let us know that there is, you know, current training. I know Chief Lee was doing implicit bias training with her team. So, you know, not just with city employees, but also making things available for community members if they're interested. You know, I did a free bystander intervention training from a nonprofit organization. And it was super helpful, you know, if I was to ever witness an incident of hate or discrimination, what are some things that I could do to help the situation? So it doesn't even have to necessarily be happening to you or someone you even know, but there are ways to kind of be supportive and help. So, you know, some of these trainings, I think, would be very helpful. And just making sure that people have access to them and are aware of them, I think, will get us closer to addressing some of the concerns we saw in the survey.
Okay, for number three is host to city-sponsored, family-friendly events during Pride in June in addition to a proclamation and lighting of the Water Tower and building and strengthening partnerships in collaboration with the LGBTQIA organizations and school clubs. We are thinking something, you know, I know last year we did a Pride march that, you know, it wasn't a city-sponsored thing, it was people in the community that got together. And all of the children were there, there were rainbow colored, you know, cupcakes. And I had on my rainbow tutu and, you know, there were children with, you know, bubbles. And everyone just walked together. And I think I remember seeing you pop out there for that. Yeah, and, and it was a great day, you know, my, all my kids were there. And, you know, so I know as we've talked about, a Pride event in town, you know, there's people who have their concerns. We're a very family-friendly city, you know, and they hear Pride, it's like they think Pride Hollywood. We want something that celebrates our families that are here in El Segundo, the children that we have going to the school, you know, to our schools here. I don't know if everyone's aware, you know, there, obviously, there's LGBTQIA clubs at the high school. There's also, as of last year, one at the middle school as well. And, you know, wanted to, especially with it being a community that hasn't had an event up until now, that would be the one that we would want to start with. But then also, you know, recommending doing similar, you know, family, family events for other underrepresented communities in El Segundo. Four, create a citywide pledge for community organizations, businesses, and others that, so they can show solidarity and their commitment to making El Segundo a more open, welcoming community. That's in line with the, you know, the two pledges that we spoke about earlier. And then five is create a network of community liaisons for the DEI committee to consult regarding events and communications geared toward a particular demographic. This, with not having, you know, there's not a possibility of having every demographic covered, you know, on the committee. This is something that would not only spur community engagement, but would help us to make sure that we are planning things in the right way. And the idea for this actually came from one of the survey responses. And they didn't say specifically when this was or how many years back it was, but they mentioned a city event that was geared towards the Jewish community that was scheduled at a time where they would be, you know, in temple or with their families. And although it was very much appreciated that, you know, that there was this event, the comment that they made was that, you know, that they couldn't have actually spoke to one Jewish person when planning this. And that's so important, you know, we are the experts on every group and we need to have those people, the trusted, you know, groups in the community that we can reach out to. And again, another way to, a great way to keep the community engaged in, in the efforts.
I touched on this one earlier, but again, just to further promote the survey and continue to get opportunities to gather more data and information. You know, we don't think this report is the end-all, be-all. There's, there's much more to still learn and gather. I mean, even from the history, information that Avery, we, we could have books and books of, you know, talking about the history of El Segundo and how it relates to DEI. And so, you know, creating opportunities to continue to collect this data, document it, and then use it to inform our efforts and initiatives going forward. Avery will end us.
All right, yeah, absolutely. So I was really pleased to be recommended by Mayor Boils to moderate an event in Manhattan Beach. And one of the things I learned moderating that event is that the city of Manhattan Beach through the South Bay Coalition Against Hate is procuring these events. through the South Bay Coalition Against Hate, is procuring these events monthly, really impressive events. And we all know that that takes time and resources. And to quote probably the most quoted person either in city council or school board meetings, which is Martin Luther King, you know, he says that budgets are moral commitments. That's this quote that you probably haven't heard from him, like people tend to quote something else. But budgets are moral commitments. And what we know is that this group, how, you know, awesome, right, they are and we are, we just can't do everything. And so I know that obviously DEI is a, is a very, very important initiative to everybody here in the council and certainly in this building. And so what we just need when we talk about this is understanding what resources we have to work with and how we can best utilize them efficiently as, as an executive. And as I know all of you are, are executives, you understand how important time is and how much, how more difficult a task can be when you have to constantly repeat and kind of start over and start over. And so we are looking for guidance on what would be the most effective way to utilize city resources and also if possible procure additional resources to help continue to move DEI forward in El Segundo. That's it?
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, questions, comments or?
Thank you, guys. Turn that off. Thank you for all the work and time you've put into this. It's, it's reassuring to see people so committed to trying to make El Segundo better. And I know the difficulty of the subject matter you are tasked with handling. I think you've handled it very well. And I look forward to, you know, whatever I can do personally to help people know that El Segundo is a place that welcomes everybody. We want everyone to raise a family here and be treated equally here. You know, let me know what you want me to do, okay?
Thank you, Councilmember Baldino. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank you very much. I think it's a great report. And it was, I was listening to the three components that you were saying, the three common threads, you know, the education component, the definition of DEI, the role of DEI. You know, as I was thinking back at the time, at the time when we actually brought this, with this committee together, you know, things have changed and it's important in all aspects of, of governance that you constantly reevaluate and reassess and re-change. And I think you guys have done a great job of really starting, you know, starting something amazing. And we just now need to constantly adapt and change and make sure that the communication is out there. And maybe we need to do, in our strategic planning session, have another conversation about the definition, the role, and then do the outreach component to make sure that everyone's clear on what our interpretation or what we're trying to accomplish here in El Segundo. So I think it was a good way for you, I thank you for bringing that to us because I think as we go into our strategic planning sessions, we really need to have that conversation. Because what we did three years ago, or, you know, is, things have changed. And we need now need to adapt and, and constantly improve. So thank you very much for bringing those three components in. And I did want to, you know, I just, you know, I think, I much, I think it was you Denise that said it about, you know, we need to look at all aspects. And I just want to make sure we're always looking at all, as our El Segundo changes, that we're constantly looking to see, make sure that everyone feels welcome and that we're actually servicing everyone's needs. And I know coming out of COVID, we changed a lot of our practices. So I know, like, as I have a senior mother who lives in town, you know, and I know that for her, you know, COVID changed the way we do outreach, the way we communicate. And she has become more isolated from the city because of, she does, she's not technically savvy. So I just want to make sure as we continually to, to look at diversity and equity and inclusion, that we're not as, we as a society become more technically focused, especially with AI and all that stuff. We have a, a large senior base, which I believe the, the EDAC group mentioned. We need to make sure we're not missing the, the communication lines to them because they are not going to be as apt as, you know, adapt, adopting those new technologies. So I think, I just want to make sure as we continue this, we constantly keep that in the back of our mind, that we need to make sure our outreach is hitting all micro communities in our, in our community. But thank you, great job.
Great report, as usual. One thing I, I did want to bring up, what you talked about role. And I know Carol just touched on it as well. And, and, you know, we all interviewed every single one of you, the ones that have left, the ones that have stayed, the new ones, et cetera. And one of the, and I, as you can imagine, I get a tremendous amount of questions in the community about what you all actually do. And the way I answer that question is very consistent. You, you volunteer a tremendous amount of time and you're an advisory group. You know, the idea was, take a look at what we do and how we do it and how we can improve upon it. And you've done all that. There is always going to be individuals who want to believe what they want to believe. Trust me, we, we see it up here on a daily basis. And one of the things that, that we can't do is legislate people's morality. We just can't. As much as we, we'd like to change, we, we can't. We, we do the best we can. But in the end, people change their views based on experiences. And we have been providing that. You know, you have some great data points in here, you know. And I know you couldn't share every single thing on your slide presentation, but, you know, one of the slides that you put up was Slide 11 and had, and it was about the median age. Okay. So what does that mean to you that the median age has gone from 50 to 16? What, what does that indicate to you?
It indicates that African Americans are coming for the school district and, which is why I'm here. I moved my children here for, you know, this amazing opportunity. And the, as we talked about earlier with the, you know, accessible housing, you know, it's not, between it being a community where you might not feel as comfortable and as welcome, especially once children are out of the house, is it beneficial to, to stay? And, you know, at the cost here.
But in, but in general, just through all the data points, it seemed that things are, as you mentioned, slowly, but moving in, in a good direction. And I think that's positive. And that data was from 2020, so I'm sure it probably looks a little bit different right now. But, but again, I, I just want to, there's a lot to unpack here on, on your recommendations, a tremendous amount. And I do not believe that we could go through every single one of those things and make decisions on them because it's, it's a lot of moving parts to all those things. But it's very well thought out and very comprehensive. And I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Giroud. Mayor Potem.
Yeah, I thought some of those, the median age statistics were interesting in the same regard, right? That conclusion that you draw is, is what pulls people here. And, you know, in, in a narrow view, it may be just the schools, but also you could opine that maybe it is becoming more welcoming and people feel better about coming. I thought some of those corollary city programs are really interesting, of the Jacksonville one. I got, I don't know how you guys, just through 10,000 cities. It was a creative one. I would, Huntington, West Virginia could not have been close to the top of the list. And having spent plenty of time at Jacksonville, North Carolina, I assure you, you know, there's a lot of Jacksonvilles in America and that is, it's not number one on the tourist destinations. And, and unless you're a 21-year-old Marine. So I thought those are interesting though. And I thought that was, in terms of kind of the, the low hanging fruit of things we do well, you know, branding are things we do well and catchphrases are things we do well. And, and, you know, the reasonably low effort, but if done well, have certainly a very disproportionate reward. So I think there's, there's some, some particularly interesting ideas. I, I think, and, and Avery touched on this just briefly, but there's a common thread that we heard in the EDC presentation that speaks to some of those pieces, and go with me on this, but some of the, the ideas around pipelining and the diversification of the workforce, there are, there's certainly clearly a role somewhere for someone to tie together the efforts of the chamber, the efforts of EDC, the efforts of the WIB, all of those distinct bodies that tend to operate in a, at the school systems with Da Vinci, you know, some, some other programs. There, there's clearly a gap there that, that, that is seeking some piece of integrumentary material. So I wonder if there's a place in, in the next year programming for DEI that touches that. But also, this comes from our time with the school district, not school district, with the, with the civic day in the schools. They had the same question about housing. And, and your, your treaties on redlining made me think of it, that the efforts to undo redlining, the state of California has put a lot of effort to that with the, the California Home Finance Agency, right? And that thing got gobbled up instantly. But that's $100 million worth of guaranteed loans that I don't think many people know about. So in, in terms of the way that if we have 250 units that are already planned for and 300 more likely to come into permitting and whatever happens with the downtown specific plan, there will be new units online that conceivably could be available to people to whom they would not have been imaginable in the past. And figuring out a way for us to be able to communicate as a city that there are public monies available to establish credit and down payments and things for people who, who would not have dreamed of them or dreamed of coming here in the past, that could be a role for this as well because it touches directly on one of these original sins of government housing programs, which is the inequitable distribution of, of loans after World War II. So those are things I thought about. And, and, you know, I've been mulling around the underuse of the farmer's market as we seem to have not quite gotten that right. But we have big success in our, in our festival holidays. So there's cultures here that appear once a year and like, oh my gosh, you know, like, these Bangladeshis, you know, those sorts of things. Like, maybe there's an opportunity to showcase some of those and people can showcase their culture in a way that El Segundo could have more visibility on the different groups here as well. But either way, you could tell, I like looking at it. I like photographs and colors because I like USA Today. No, I, I, I really appreciate it. So I, I think there's a lot for us to take away from this as we go into the next year and work on some of the recommendations that you made. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thank you for your time. I agree that we do branding really well. I think there's opportunities there to make it very clear. And I'll say anecdotally, I've lived here almost 30 years now. And it was really interesting to see the census data. I, the last data I saw suggested that El Segundo was 40% non-white, which is pretty close. I think that foots pretty closely with what you have in here. Anecdotally, when you walk around town, I'd be curious of your opinion, but having lived here a long time, when I walked down Grand and Main Street in Richmond on the weekends and the evenings, there's a different representation of people than there was 20 years ago, even five years ago. So much so that I've asked some of our merchants, I'd love to see, I don't want specifics, but your data on where people are coming from because they have the credit card data with their zip codes to know, to prove that people are feeling more welcome here. And I feel like there was somewhat of a distinct line in 2020 where things changed a bit, where people started coming to El Segundo that had not historically come here. And I don't have the data to prove it, but walking around the city every day, it feels to be the case. I'd love to see if you feel like things have become more welcoming in general. Do you, I see heads nodding. I mean, is that, I'm not saying there isn't more to do. I'm just asking you for your opinion.
Yeah, so I would answer that question, maybe, I would give you maybe a two-part answer and it, it would probably touch on some of the stuff that Councilman Drew said, Councilman Baldino said as well. Certainly feel the change in the air. We certainly feel that there is, you know, progress being made. At the same time, I would say that a lot of us have a lot of DEI fatigue because of those who do not support DEI. I will tell you, as your very unofficial city weatherman, that, that the, that the day that I was elected to the DEI committee was the day I got the most unfollows from El Segundo weather, that same day, the day that that was announced. And so, yes, it is a small number, but yes, it is also very painful. And so what we need, like as Councilman Baldino said, as an advisory committee, we don't have very much power. The power is with city council. And so we need you to be advocates, we need you to be friends, we need you going out there and being passionate. You guys are going to be able to have conversations with people that we just won't be able to have. The five of you will just have a reach that we, we will never have. And there will be a level of trust that certain people will engender with you that we just can't reach. So I think that when we look at corporations or cities or whatever it may be that are very successful doing this, it is all 100% because of leadership. So I would say, yes, Mayor Boils, absolutely we made some progress. I think to continue that progress, we will be looking at the, the five of you to, to lead us because that is where the power rests. So I would just add that piece too.
Thank you for that insight. Anything else to add, you two, to it?
So I haven't been here as long as, you know, some of the, the other people. And from just the short amount of time that I've been on the committee, I feel like there's times where I am, so reading hundreds of survey responses. And, you know, every person that responded answered, you know, probably six or seven open-ended questions. And a lot of them were very, very negative. And, you know, I, I have to admit, there is a part of me that I think at this point is a little jaded with that. And there's the, the concern that I have in this community and with my children being in this community, knowing that there's people here that feel that way, people that I don't know who they are, you know, that might pass me on the street, but seeing some of the very ugly things that were written. But then I have to remind myself, you know, take myself out of, out of that and just focus on what are the interactions that I'm having, you know, every day. And my children are happy and they're thriving. My little one's got special needs. He's at Center Street. His teacher, oh, I think she lost, his teacher was here. She's got a lot to do, but yeah, she came to support. And, you know, it's a, he is an autistic savant in second grade. And the biggest problem that they have is the kids fight over who gets to sit next to him. He's very much accepted. So there's so many things, you know, we, I love, really love about the, the community. But I, you know, and it was kind of interesting you say 2020. You know, my opinion of, of you of the things that happened in 2020 was when things fell apart. And, you know, speaking at some of the rallies in town and seeing some of the counter poster testers that came out and seeing some of the people that I knew and were close to and have opinions that I never anticipated. So I feel like I'm, my opinion is, or my view is still trying to recover from 2020 as opposed to having gotten better from there. If there's anything.
Thank you. Christopher?
I don't have much to add to that. Again, I have a senior and a sixth grader and we've been here for eight years. And I do see a big difference in terms of, you know, demographics and the groups of friends and the student population, just from that age gap. You know, it's not as diverse for my older one as it is for my younger one. But both of them have experienced, you know, incidents of discrimination and, and hate. And, and they're half, they're halfway there, you know, they're, they, they can pass. So it's, you know, I've seen some progress. It was still happening, but definitely, I think having this DEI committee is helpful, but we really do, you know, one thing we noticed with the survey data was that, you know, it was a lot of blaming the committee. And so having the city standing by us and saying, you know, we're, we're part of the city, you know, we were formed by the city. And having the city have ownership of us and have our backs in that regard, I think will go a long way as, as Avery mentioned. So yes, definitely lots of progress, definitely more to do. There'll always be something. But I think it's great to know that we all are kind of working together towards, toward this common goal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think a couple of my colleagues already said it, but let us take this, digest this. I think this is something that we're, we're going right into strategic planning anyway in, that's June, right? Right around the corner. May, a couple of weeks, actually.
May 16th, I believe.
So the timing's good. It'll allow us time to consider this and then figure out what we can implement, what we have the, you know, what's the word I'm looking for?
And I liked what you just said about the, the DEI committee is part of the city and we need to make sure that that's very clear, that this isn't just the DEI committee. Like, it's not a standalone. It's, it is the, it is represent, it's part of the city. And I, I liked that comment. I think we need to make sure as we go through that strategic planning system, how do we make sure that that's constantly being brought back? That this is the whole city, it's not just one component.
So I just got one thing. It's on your, on your report, I don't, I probably didn't make this slide, but it's page 11, I don't know if you have your booklet there, but it's, it's under item number three. It's called Support for the LGBTQIA Community. And one of the quotes in the end, and that's why I'm not sure whether this is a quote off a survey or a quote from the DEI, was that there are currently no members of the LGBTQIA community in leadership positions nor on the DEI committee. Was that from the survey or was that from you? And the reason why I mention it is that it's inaccurate.
I hope so.
But we shouldn't be putting it on there if it's not, because this is, this is our document, city and DEI, right? So to put a statement out there without the backup on it, that, that's, we have to be careful about something like that.
Absolutely.
Well, the thing is, is that in something like this, we talk about, you know, the inaccuracies can be very dangerous. So this is now a public document, is what I'm saying.
And that's, and, do we, do we have to retract some of our teams for that? Yeah, and for me, that came from the discussion around whether or not we needed, when we were filling vacancies on the last DEI committee, when someone did bring up, you know, do we need to have someone of the LGBTQIA community on there? And there was discussion around that. And I wasn't personally aware of anyone that is in a, in a leadership position.
But it says leadership positions in a community, meaning is community government? Or is it, I mean, meaning city government? Is, I, that's what, I'm just saying, is this, is this?
Is, I, that's what, I'm just saying, is this, is this a little unclear and, and we just have to be a little bit careful on that, that's all. I understand there was no malicious intent on it at all, I get it. I just want to say that this is a public document now, so we have to be a little bit careful on those things. All right? Thank you.
Thank you all for being here so late. Appreciate it. Yeah, thanks for all your time.
The Lakers.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right. They work here, they work here.
Eric unfortunately has much more time on his hands.
I guess so. All right, item 11, Arts and Culture Advisory Committee Report and Funding Requests for Fiscal Year 23, 23, 24.
Our Rec- Recreation, Parks and Libraries Director, Ally Mancini will give the staff report on this, Mayor.
Yes. Is this, okay, it is on. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Boils and members of the City Council. As City Manager George indicated, tonight staff will be presenting a report on behalf of the Arts and Culture Committee. This report will highlight accomplishments for fiscal year 22, 23 and share an overview of proposed initiatives for fiscal year 23, 24, including a proposed budget. For a little bit of background, in November 2019, the City Council approved Ordinance 1594, which established a public art or in lieu fee requirement for commercial and industrial developments with project costs of $2 million or more. Developers have the option to commission public art on site equal to 1% of their project cost, or they can deposit the equivalent amount into the city's Cultural Development Fund to support public art initiatives. The administrative guidelines for the program were approved in June 2020 and provide a framework for how the program is administered. One important note is that under the current guidelines, the City Council approves the annual budget and priorities, but not individual art projects. The current language does include a statement that indicates that this process may be adjusted in the future if needed. Historically, the Arts and Culture Committee fell under the immediate direction of the Cultural Arts Coordinator and the Library Manager. However, staff have determined that the committee will be best served moving forward by working closely with the Cultural Arts Coordinator and the Director of Recreation Parks and Library. The Cultural Arts Coordinator will manage the day-to-day operations of the programs and the Director will provide high-level guidance on establishing protocol and procedures for the committee to help manage funds and implement council priorities. Tonight, our Cultural Arts Coordinator, Sam Lee, will provide a more detailed look at the ACC's 2020, 22, 23 accomplishments and a look ahead at 23, 24. Sam?
Sam, before you begin, I want to disclose, I should have done before we started the agenda item, on April 21st, I had a coffee with John McCullough, who is with Art Walk, you want to talk to the Art Walk. And then on May 1st, I had coffee with Ava and Brian Sweeney to talk about Esmoa.
Okay.
That's it. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potam and council members. Before I jump into the presentation, I just wanted to acknowledge that there are some of the ACC members in the audience tonight. We have Ava Sweeney, who was the Chair of ACC. And then we also have Co-Chair Maureen Kingsley, and then also Joan Palmer as an ACC member. And then Natalie Strong was here earlier, so I just want to acknowledge them. Okay, so thank you for the time. So the purpose of the presentation is to give you a recap of the fiscal year initiatives that were recommended and approved last fiscal year. And then the second part of the presentation is to talk about the discussion of the budget requests for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Okay, so I want to jump right into the developers. This fiscal year, we had three successful implementations of art on site. The total amount, the value is $294,165. Three separate developers, first one is Montana Avenue Capital at 1940 East Paramarosa Avenue. The second one is Sophie 11, Two Towers at 200 North PCH. And then the third is Beyond Meat at 888 North Douglas Street. They are literally the neighbor, the direct neighbor of L'Oréal, who's representative was here earlier. And then also for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, we received $28,000. That was the in lieu payment portion from Kite Pharma. And then we're going to now jump into the initiative updates, the highlights for this fiscal year. We're going to start with the poet laureate, Hope Anita Smith, as you know, was, is our inaugural poet laureate. She led a very successful two-year term. She's still here, she's got six months left on her term, but she was able to lead a lot of public workshops, a number of them, including one recently at the Old Town Music Hall, which we wanted to support more of. And she also will be leading two public poetry workshops, I'm sorry, not workshops, but readings actually, at the Fire Station one and also Esmoa that's coming up. It's, one is for Mother's Day and the other one is for Father's Day. And so last year, we also had the operating fund, which, which was deposited, you know, for, $10,000 was deposited into that account and it's for supplies and just, you know, basic support of initiatives, things like that. We also had the Festival of Holidays. We celebrated the annual Christmas tree lighting with the other celebrations, winter celebrations of other cultures. The first year we did it, we had about 750 attendees. This past year, we had over 2,000, so that was a big jump in terms of the attendance. And then another initiative that was passed for this fiscal year was the Visual Artists and Community Program. I'm currently working with four artists, visual artists. We're kind of in the final stages of the implementation of their vision for their projects, their content, you know, what they're proposing, what they're designed to produce, you know, as their artwork is being shared to Mr. George and Ms. Voss and also Director Ms. Mancini. And so we're in the final stages of getting the approval and then implementation, execution of those artworks. There are two, actually, I just wanted to talk about two murals would be installed in the public library this year and then one light post banner art project and then one portrait series of high school students will be created through this Artist and Residency Another initiative that we worked on is the Arts and Culture Community Engagement Fund and that, the highlights from that, we were really proud to invite the Inner City Youth Orchestra for the first time to perform in El Segundo and their concert was a tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And that was really a great concert. We use Eventbrite, just as an aside, we were able to track, you know, who were making reservations and these are individuals that, you know, came from across LA County, you know, we're talking about diversity and just, you know, demographics of people coming to our city as visitors. We also got, you know, reservations as far as Hawaii, people who were probably in town that weekend and wanted to come to the concert. We also did a number of concerts, including Americana Music Concert, The Women of the West, and also Native American performers, Shelley Morningsong and Fabian Fontenelle. They performed in the Gazebo Library Park. That was really a wonderful concert that they put on. Through this fund, we were also able to create ten temporary exhibitions that involve community participation. And a lot of the programs that we created through this fund is really to engage the public and also to provide opportunities for the residents of our community and also visitors alike, so. And then the last initiative that we worked on is the, well, actually I didn't work on, but it was implemented by John McCullough, is the Art, El Segundo Art Walk. And they were very successful in the sense that participation exceeded expectations. That included 31 businesses, 48 artists, nine musical acts and one large 109-foot mural by the artist Andrew Hell. And that was installed on Main Street. They also had a kickoff party at Esmoa the night before and they also had a augmented reality installation that was, is still going on now. You can access it on your phone and it's through the, it's installed in the City Hall Plaza for that. And so I'm going to move into the fiscal year, next fiscal year, all the, these are the ACC-recommended initiatives for the next fiscal year. And so the committee recommendation for 2023, 2024 totals, actually it's 316, 316,000, I made a mistake on that, I will correct that, but so after, if, if the initiatives gets approved this, tonight or, you know, we come back to council at a later time, our expected fund balance for the next fiscal year would be 538,088. This is after the approval of the 316,000. So I just wanted to talk about the five renewed approved initiatives. We're going to move forward and hopefully continue that for this, the next fiscal year. First one is the Operating Fund, second one would be Festival of Holidays, Visual Artists and Community Fund, the fourth is the Arts and Culture Community Engagement Fund, the fifth one is El Segundo Art Walk and then also staff salary allocation for the Cultural Arts Coordinator position. And then for the new initiative would be the Literary Arts Fund. So we're just going to hopefully continue and deposit the $10,000 that, that the CFO had recommended for the program. That again is just to support additional materials, supplies, things like that, hoping to create a collections management policy, data, digital archive of art collections, things like that. Now regarding the poet laureate program, we're going to fold that, we're going to rename that for the next fiscal year and call that the Literary Arts, because we are going to, we're seeking the second, the city's second poet laureate, because Hope Anita Smith's term is coming up, will end in December. And so we're going to create, find a second poet laureate and also develop programs that would support her position and other literary programs as well. And then for the Festival of Holidays this year, we're going to kind of scale down and really focus on the entertainment, the cultural experiences, the entertainment for this year. And hopefully we'll, you know, bring the attendance, sort of augment the attendance through the momentum that we have established from last year. And then the Visual Artists and Community Program Fund, we are going to also scale that back from $35,000 to $25,000. And again, the program's the same, it's just creating an Artist and Residency Program where four artists are selected. And then the purpose is to augment the city's permanent art collection through time. And so, like I said, this year we'll have four pieces that the city will own and hopefully we'll continue on that. And then the Arts and Culture Community Engagement Fund, we've also scaled that back to $25,000. And so this will, this fund again, will be using, will be using to offer sort of temporary cultural and arts experiences to the community. And hopefully that will like activate places like City Hall Plaza, Library Park, Farmer's Market, as well as, you know, places like we've been trying to support, like Old Town Music Hall and even the Richmond Streets at Eatery's as well. And then finally, this next fiscal year, the El Segundo Art Walk, we're requesting $71,000. It is a jump from 58 last year. And so there's two parts and I can go back to that actually, sorry. This year, they are asking $41,000 for the operation, operating costs. Last year was 38,000. And then the remainder of the 71 from the 41 would be $30,000 and that's to, to implement a public art install. And that is, and that's, that's the figure that we have for the 71,000. And then also with the ACC's contribution, this fiscal year, we are planning to put $40,000 towards the downtown beautification project and that would be the artistic light project at the north end of Main Street. And so this is, this presentation you have and so I'm not going to read through it, but you know, this is just a recap of what I just mentioned. And then, let's see here. I think that's it. Any, any questions you have?
Thank you, Sam. And thank you to everybody that's on the committee. I know it's a labor of love, it's all volunteer and I know that a lot of hours go into this. So I know I did attend one of the Arts and Culture meetings a couple of weeks back, a month or so ago back. And one of the things I think that I'd like to push forward, and I don't see it on here, is that we really, we establish an operational grant for those brick and mortar company, pick and mortar businesses in town that have been here, their, we should grandfather in Esmoa, the Automobile Museum and the Old Town Music Hall. Those are three entities that have been long established in El Segundo, have been providing art and culture to our community for many, many years. And I just, I think, you know, art comes in many different forms and I want to make sure that we are constantly, you know, they invested in us and we continue, we start to invest in them. I had a conversation with a business owner, not a couple of weeks ago, on the Main Street and this business owner basically said, you know, when businesses and when the city does events that brings in a targeted audience, like say a pickleball tournament or Esmoa does their event or this Old Town Music Hall does something, it does bring commerce to town. So I think it's by investing in these brick and mortar businesses or nonprofits, we're bringing business back to El Segundo. So I personally would like to see the budget adjusted to accommodate a grant, an operational grant. And I also believe that, you know, I own, I'm very passionate about art, I have my own dance company. I really would like to see us get away from festivals and really, and move toward more artist art and hard, you know, I think, I think organizations, nonprofits can bring their own festivals and we can, you know, support them, but I think that we as a city need to look long-term at what, you know, art installations that have longevity. You know, I look back at, you know, you go to into Europe and you see these beautiful art deco building, or these, no, deco art buildings, these fountains, and that took someone with a lot of, a group of people with a lot of guts to say, no, we're going to put this major fountain in the middle of our city. And I think festivals are great, but they're one-offs and they move off. And I think that if nonprofits want to do those, let them do them and let us focus on things that have longevity for our future, for our future children. And that's how I, that's my impression of art.
Can I just make a follow-up comment to that? Councilmember Perstek did attend a meeting and we actually did have a follow-up meeting with the ACC about specifically the grant idea that you had. And one of the things that's on their work plan for this year is to potentially create something like that and really, you know, work on what that would look like and what the details would be and what their involvement would be. So I think there was definitely an interest on the committee to do that, they just felt they needed a little bit more time. But yes, that's certainly something we want to take a look at.
I support Councilmember Perstek's initiative on that and I don't think it needs to wait.
I support Councilmember Perstek's initiative on that, and I don't think it needs to wait. I think it needs to be inside this budget, because they're hurting right now. And another year, one or two of them may not be here. So I I believe we have to act a little bit further on that. So a couple of the questions I have, I guess, you know, we've talked a lot about the Festival of Holidays, and I do believe that it's a it's a it's a great event. It's it's had a couple of different lifespans right now from, you know, it was a small, and then it got gigantic. And and I do believe there should be a conversation about having everybody done in one night. Okay, so whether it's, you know, the menorah lighting and Diwali and all those things kind of scaled down, but done here on on one big, nice evening, on that Thursday night, you know, culminating with the Christmas tree lighting and having all the traditional acts that we normally have, and make sure everybody's included in that. I think that might be a better thing from a community standpoint, and also for the businesses, because when we we shut the streets down a couple of times, it does affect the business community. So that might be something to look at. And as such, that might cut down on what that twenty five K ask really needs to be. It might might need to be less, because I know the Christmas tree lighting traditionally has been a city-sponsored event. So there could be some some numbers taken up in there. The Art Walk is is an unbelievable event. I think it brings in, what, five to five thousand to ten thousand people into town that, you know, I think it's really helped open us up. Seventy one K is a big ask. And and I also, you know, a couple of questions I have on that is I keep I've seen so many different numbers on what the Art Walk cost is and where the money's coming from. What's coming from the general fund on that? Do we have that number? Is there anything coming from the general fund?
Well, so the general fund would be.
Like zero, meaning from the city outside of ACC. What are we paying?
Well, it would be the staff salaries for the public works time, police department time.
So it's more of an in lieu type of thing, but there's no actual dollar. Okay, good. Thank you for that, because I was so confused. I keep seeing so many different numbers on that.
Right.
So this thirty thousand dollar art component.
Yes.
It says to be to be determined. It's really difficult for me to say yes to it. Thirty thousand dollar price tag to be determined.
So let me give you a little feedback on that. So we did have someone come and propose, Mr. McCullough proposed a augmented reality art project. It's a map that would, you know, highlight locations where we have art, and people could get on their phones, and it would be an augmented experience. However, the committee just learned about it recently and wanted some more time to really vet that and see if it was a good spend for them. I think there's, you know, difference, you know, different committee members have different opinions.
I remember that meeting, because I was there for that one. So I guess one of the questions we had on that was, it's a one shot deal. And then every time you do it the next year, there's there's software updates. Just think it's a gift that keeps on giving as far as expenses go, and I know that was a concern. So again, my concern on that is is that seventy one thousand dollars for a one day event when you only have a three hundred and twenty a three hundred and sixteen thousand dollar budget, you know, and if you you actually shared that on one of the slides that after this, you're projecting you only have about half a million left in there. Okay, the only way this thing is funded is through development.
Right.
So I think we may need to go back and look at this and figure out how to stretch that dollar a little bit more, else you're going to be out of money by the next by the next budget cycle, and that's going to be problematic.
And I think the Art Walk is it's a difficult conversation, right? Because it is a great event, and so.
Not saying not to do the event. That event is fantastic. Trust me. The residual benefit that we get as a community from that is outstanding. I just look at the price tag going from, I guess, it was fifty eight to seventy one.
Right.
You know, and so the fifty eight last year, I can't I don't know how it was broken down, but the operating budget is forty one. So was last year's operating budget fifty eight?
Last year was thirty eight thousand.
Thirty eight, that's right.
Twenty thousand dollars was for the art component, which was the mural and the augmented reality activation in City Hall Plaza.
Okay, so you're going from fifty eight to so actually, you're asking for thirteen thousand dollars more on this one event. But it's still, again, I'm just looking if you're looking at your overall budget.
Right.
It's difficult for me to 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 look at it and say, yeah, I approve it as it is, because you're going to be out of money. And and that's going to be a problem. So I there's some great things in here. I just think we might need to to take a look back.
I also just wanted to add, though, you know, that ties to the grant program as well, because that's going to also deplete the money. You know, if we're putting money towards a grant program from that half a million dollars, it's going to impact that that bottom line.
Right. So we have to look at how the money is best served, right? And and three institutions of this city that have a tremendous value in the creative economy and bringing people in and the history of the town is an important piece. So if we need to allocate some money to that in lieu of something else, I personally, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, would be very much in favor of that.
And I, yeah. I think that's something we would definitely like to, you know, to understand. If that's the council wants us to prioritize that, we can certainly do that. We can go back and take a look at those things, but we'd want to we want to make sure that that's the direction the council would like us to go, because it will mean some of these other programs either getting, you know, trimmed back a little bit, or potentially, like Councilmember Perstek said, relying on those organizations then to maybe take on some of these events. So that's where the tough decision is.
I'm in favor of doing it for this fiscal year as well.
Favor of doing what? Can you clarify that? Favor of doing what?
Doing an operational grant for the three brick and mortar foundations in our town.
For for how much money?
I didn't we'd have to go back and look at the budget.
I guess where I struggle with that one, first of all, you might recall, and I love art, but I was not a fan of the one percent for the arts. It's nothing to do with my affinity for art. I just don't think it's government's place. Because we're in this quandary now, and we have been for the last several years, about how best to allocate money on something so subjective as art. And as much as I love the three institutions referred to, Zimmerman was established by a very wealthy philanthropist who has since passed, who had a passion for cars and collected cars. And other museums have been created by similar type people. And then to then create an an organization that you want city funds for, I struggle with that, because that was not part of the intent when some of these facilities were established. They were not designed, at least they weren't communicated, to be designed to then rely on city funds. And how are we going to continue to support that for the foreseeable future when we know we've got considerable budget challenges ahead of us? We know we're going to increase our police contract tonight. We're voting on that. We know we're likely going to add police officers. There's so many things ahead of us that I'm struggling with how we're going to just one thing. I know it's an arts and culture fund. It's not part of the general fund, but we have so many budget challenges ahead of us. I'm struggling with this on on several several counts. On the Art Walk, though, I have a specific question. When I read through the deck, it looked as if they actually generated a profit of roughly twenty thousand last year.
That is correct. That's according to their own profit loss numbers that they gave us.
So is this twenty twenty three projection also forecasting a twenty thousand dollar profit?
I don't think we got a projection for the for the year.
But isn't it reasonable to assume? I mean, I don't I don't think they're doing it for free. I know that people involved with it, but.
For the discuss for I think for my discussion last year, they they don't charge for their time.
That is correct.
And so this is ideally compensating the time that they are putting into, because it's not a five oh one C three, but it's a for-profit business. So this is effectively compensating for time that they do not charge as a direct cost to their budget.
That's correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's correct.
But if there's a crunch for cash, which there might be, I mean, maybe there's an opportunity there. I'm not sure. I don't think the principals would want to hear that, but I'm just putting it out there, because it sounds like we don't have enough money, basically. So anyway, I'm done. I'll open it up to my colleagues.
Just a few thoughts. Mr. Maran, the first thing that and it's it's related to this, but not for tonight's discussion, but something in the back of our head, is that when we spoke about this upcoming a few months ago, we definitely wanted to, I shouldn't say definitely, I definitely wanted to look and see if our ordinance on the percent for arts had set the top contribution limit too high, and that it was, in effect, deterring people from participating. So I think that that is that's a foray. That's a finance discussion, but that is something that we we may want to see how this program is, in effect, affecting direct investment into the town. That said, to talk about sort of the Johnny come lately to this is the idea of grant programs or at key institutions. I assume the city man or city attorney has something to say about how that works out. It honestly, like, it creeps me out a little bit, because it feels like sort of private partnership on things that aren't ideally suited for it necessarily. By the same token, I see the value on those things. I wonder if we have a degree of expertise, either on the staff or within this committee, to look at California Arts Council or NEA or these things that, you know, these big places where our tax dollars go to fund these programs. They just live in different buckets. And I don't know how California Arts Council works. I don't know if they have a lot of money or a little money, or if they only give the schools. I know it exists, and there's people who make a couple hundred thousand dollars a year working for it. I assume they have great lives and cool cars. But we may be able to put some time conceivably within that committee to look and see if that's the place, because that's those guys do do block. Well, at least the NEA does do block grants, right? They do grant institutions and cultural institutions. So Esmoa and and Old Town Music Hall might be better suited for that than Zimmerman. I just I just don't know exactly how it works. But I I don't know if I'm creating a go do this. But if we don't have money here for it, but we think it's a good idea, and there is, I don't know how short they are on time on on paying their bills, but if there's an opportunity to look at some of those big buckets of money that exist at the state and federal level, maybe that's more appropriate than the city trying to get involved, because eventually, you can see down the road, like, all of a sudden, there's a city trying to run them, and that would be a disaster. We'd figure out a way to do it, but it wouldn't be the highest of best use. For these specific things, I'm very deferential. You know, certainly, if if that thirty thousand dollars in the Art Walk is a very squishy, we have a big art plan, and it's, you know, if it's squishy, it's squishy. Or if they've got a cool plan, and it's going to work, and it's it's, you know, if it's something that's going to live on in perpetuity in a virtual realm, I mean, I could be convinced, because I don't know art. So, you know, these things broadly I defer to, but as far as as looking at the other add-ons, there might be other places that are better suited to fund these directly. Or maybe it's, you know, maybe it's something that we bridge it. Well, they do do it, but that's all. I don't know if that takes us anywhere.
So I met with Eva and Brian, and I understand the predicament they're in. They've they've spent a lot of their personal funds to create Esmoa. Esmoa has been a great contributor to our city, and I am very grateful for what they have done. I don't think these dollars are properly used to be given over to nonprofits. We take this money from developers. We have a code, I'm looking at page one eighty one, that says, limit the city's use of the funds to only one design acquisition commission, installation improvement, relocation, maintenance, conservation, restoration, utility changes, and issuance of artwork. Two, to sponsor, support artistic or cultural services. And three, the city's cost administering the cultural development fund and associated programs, which is how we get the salary in there. We're dealing with a finite amount of dollars. If there's a conversation to be had, if the city as a policy wants to subsidize nonprofit museums, I think that's best had in a budgetary setting, because it is a long term commitment. We can't say, here's a couple bucks, and then next year, we don't have it anymore, because they can't plan on that. They can't rely on that. To the mayor's point, we have a lot of big problems coming for our little small town that we're going to need the resources to deal with. And I I don't agree that we should send back this budget that went through a committee process of people that we appointed, who have expertise in this field, to plan out a year and say, do it again. I'm happy to have that conversation. I I don't think this finite amount of money is where that would come from. Maybe the Top Golf Parks and Rec Fund can be looked at. We don't know what that number is yet, although I don't don't want to see that five million dollars not get paid back, or the pension to get paid down as it was designed to do with those funds. But I am not in agreement of using something I believe the developer was giving us if they're not creating public art on their property. They expect public art somewhere else, as opposed to being handed over to another nonprofit, despite the good work that they do and the positive impacts. But you can say the brewery brings in people from out of town. So why don't we subsidize the brewery? You know, you can make these arguments about people come here for this, and therefore, we get a benefit from it. But I can't I can't go along with saying that this allocation of funds should also be used to subsidize our nonprofits despite the value that they bring. So I those are my two cents.
I just look, there's the state local partners grant, which is seems to be designed for systems just like this. I'm sure I'm wrong, because I'm just going from a one paragraph summary, but I think it's worth looking at to see if there's big buckets of money we could tap into that are ready made for this scenario, because we're surely the first, not the first people to go through this.
We need to give staff direction. We've got two saying send it back.
Well, I just I just also want to reiterate that I wasn't talking about using general fund money for this. I was talking about the reallocation of funds within the arts and the cultural development.
No, I I hear you. I just think that's a short term fix, if you're looking at.
Understood. I'm just saying that we we got off on a tangent of we have things coming down the road, and I get that, believe me. But it had nothing to do with this conversation about the development fund, because nothing we do for any of those other things would come out of the development fund, the cultural fund, that's all.
Actually, that's not entirely true, because we've been talking about using part of those funds for things like the plunge. So I'd like to move that we approve funding at the amount of three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars for the cultural development fund initiatives. Three sixteen, sorry.
Apologize. Yes, three sixteen is correct.
And see if we get the three votes, just to move this forward based on, to your point, Councilmember Baldino, what the council, what the committee already put forth as recommendations.
I'll second your motion, Mayor.
Any further comment, discussion?
Yeah. I just feel that this budget seems to me that we are just re it seems to me that we're just basically cookie cuttering, cookie cuttering what we did last year. And I we have not seen any assessment of were these programs like successful, not successful. I'm really struggling with the Festival of Holidays. You know, I really want to see that folded in to one event on the Thursday. I just I want to make sure that we're not just passing this on because it's easier or a shorter time, and that there's some real you know, like I said, I sat in that meeting, and I sometimes feel that there's a lot of members of that meeting, and things get passed just because it's easier and it's rather than actually having hard conversations. So I mean, I'm still in favor of the grant the operational grant program, and I'd like to see us somehow work a find a way to keep these three brick and mortar businesses or nonprofits in place. But I I I also would like to see, you know, you have each of the different components, the poet laureate, which now the Literacy, and all these different things. I just don't want to recreate something. I don't want to keep doing something just because we've done it once, and now it's just this is what's in place. You know, is there a better way for use of that funds if we know that the number of the funds is not being replenished as historically as in the past, like it says in the past? Is there a better use of that funds, or should we be holding at those funds for bigger projects? So I'm just, that's my, I'm I'm going to vote no.
Hold on one second. Just the only thing I want to reiterate, there was not a three votes for the those three things. So let's take that off the table right now and just deal with the budget that's up there right now. Okay, just for sake of argument. I mean, the about the three institutions, it's not a discussion anymore. It was three to two. It's cool. I just my understanding also is that when this budget was passed by the ACC, there was barely a quorum? Was there?
Yeah, there was a quorum.
But there was a mainly, there's nine people on that on that committee. Was there five people at the meeting?
I think there were six. There were six.
So all I'm asking is, keep the things that are up there. But let's look at how we can maybe make that money stretch a little bit more.
Yes.
It's not that we have to approve this now, or you're dead. I mean, if we want to sit there and say, okay, go with the Art Walk the way it is, because that's the next event, I think you probably have to get going on that. Is that am I fairly correct on that?
Yeah, it's an honest question.
All right. Is this, you know, let's take a little bit of time, because if you look at, there's a lot of money put into a couple of things, and is there a way to stretch that dollar a little bit more based on what the budgetary constraints are looking like going forward? That that's all I'm asking. I'm not rejecting it. I'm saying, can we just kind of take another look at it based on that? And if the answer is no, the answer is no. But that's all I'm asking. Hold on, just procedurally, we have a motion with the first and a second, so we're going to go to a vote. Do I need to repeat the motion? Okay. No? Everyone? Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are we allowed? Are we allowed, city clerk, who's the per the proclamation, the owner of the rulebook? Are we allowed to give staff? Are we allowed to give staff direction on the grant piece?
Absol-
So can, can I do a substitute, a substitutary amended motion on that as well to add that the, yeah, make a move that the, the city manager looks at finding resources to research funding opportunities for those three institutions?
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, okay.
And I think between, we do have a consultant that does grant writing for us for a number of the departments that we really haven't tapped into, other than public works projects, so we can look at art.
Absolutely.
And now we have a recently hired lobbyist that can help us champion those grant applications. So I think between the two, we can start looking at avenues to go after grant money for artwork.
Definitely.
I just want to add that there's a lot of money out there for, you know, COVID recovery grants. That has been a huge thing in the last, you know, two years. And so LA County has a number of grants that are given to nonprofits, you know, the LA County Cultural Department, LA County Cultural Department. So that fits into like the Esmoa model, you know, the Old Town Music Hall model, so.
Thank you.
And I've mentioned that in the meeting as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Mancini. All right, moving on to item eight, temporary appointment of CalPERS retiree David Kane pursuant to Government Code Section seventy-five, twenty-two dot fifty-six and twenty-one, two, 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 twenty-one, two, two, one, two, two thousand, no, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-one H. Mr. George, who will present on this?
Well, I can, if I can ask our outgoing finance director, or actually, Rebecca will, will present this item. But I was, I was quick to say, I'd like to get Joe up here, because this is his last meeting tonight.
Joe.
So it's something, so go ahead, Rebecca, sorry. Yeah, Joe can present some details on the, who we're recommending for the, the finance, the interim finance director.
So this is another temporary employment agreement that's required, because we are appointing an interim finance director or CFO, who is also a CalPERS retired and new attendant. So I was going to speak about him, but I will go ahead and let Joe do that.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. So I did have to use some brownie points within my professional career path to find this individual. His name is David Kane. A little bit of background on him, he's a twenty-eight-year-plus, years of public service, most of it within the management and executive level. He served in six local agencies, including Fountain Valley, San Bernardino, and he helped San Bernardino get through their bankruptcy. So he came on board while they filed for bankruptcy, and helped them successfully navigate the bankruptcy path. City of Chino, City of Cerro Madre, and Molten Nigella Water District. Post-retirement support has been provided to the cities of Los Alamos, the Harbor Heights, Fountain Valley, Beaumont, and Wildomor. He's served as interim finance director for the city of Clermont. He also has twenty years of private sector experience as corporate controller and owner-manager of several service-related businesses. He also teaches at three colleges, Cal Poly, Pomona, Cal State Long Beach, and Cal State Northridge. He's a professor for their MPA and business management programs there. So he does have extensive knowledge within municipal finance and private finance. So he'll be a great interim finance director, and he has great leadership skills, and will continue what I've built within the finance team and, and keep that moving forward. So any, any questions about Mr. David Kane?
Not seeing any, Joe. We trust your judgment.
Yes.
Where are you going again?
Burbank.
Boo. Just kidding. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
It's full of black mold. Tons of mold.
They charge for parking at Burbank.
Ruthlessly enforced meters, Joe.
Do we have anything? Sorry. Wait, if we added arc meters here, you might stay? Is that what I hear you saying? Just kidding. Rebecca, anything else to add?
No, that's all. Thank you.
So we have to adopt a resolution that the city attorney will read by title, and then we have to approve and associate a attached deployment. So city attorney, could you please read the resolution?
Mayor and councillor, a resolution of the city council of the city of El Segundo, appointing David Kane as interim chief financial officer in conformity with California public employees' retirement system and state law requirements is ready for adoption.
Who would like to move approval?
Per sixth, I move.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Yep, Baldino seconds.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, okay. And then approve and associate a attached employment agreement with David Kane for the interim appointment to the position of chief financial officer. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. That was Jeru.
Second.
Pimentel with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I see you're not moving. So memorandum of understanding between the city of El Segundo and the Police Officers Association, and amendment to the city contributions for CalPERS medical premiums. Mrs. Rennick.
So this item is the result of more than a year and a half of labor negotiations. We were able to reach a contract with the POA, Police Officers Association. It's two years and three months, which will put us in line with our new fiscal year, which ends on June thirtieth. So the term of the contract will end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. It provides a voluntary binding arbitration provision for employees, should they choose to take it for a total bonus of up to thirty thousand dollars within the term of the contract. There are salary adjustments, seven percent effective upon approval, three percent January first of twenty twenty-four, and three percent of twenty twenty-five in January. Increases to the health contributions, which is why the additional resolution for CalPERS to amend the PIMCA amount by fifty dollars each year. There's changes to the life insurance. The basic life insurance will increase from ten thousand dollars to a fifty thousand dollar policy. And then there are modifications to the Tier Two education, which will permit additional employees with a master's degree to receive the pay, and an adjustment to the longevity pay table, which will allow additional employees to receive longevity at twenty-five years instead of twenty-six years. And additionally, there is a residency requirement for new employees hired after approval and adoption of the MOU, that they reside within one hundred road miles of the police department. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Mrs. Rennick, any questions or comments? All right. Do we have a resolution to read?
Yes, mayor and councillor, a resolution approved and adopted, the memorandum of understanding between the city of El Segundo and the El Segundo Police Officers Association Bargaining Unit is ready for adoption.
I'll move approval. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, excellent. And then we another, we have another resolution, right, city attorney?
Yes, mayor. Fix, a resolution fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees and new attendents with respect to a recognized employee association, I'm sorry, employee organization. Zero, zero, two, El Segundo Police Officers Association is ready for adoption.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Jeru, so moved. Thank you.
Per sixth, second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. I will say, sigh of relief. It's been a long, it's been a long-
Yeah.
Somewhat tumultuous hall, and I want to thank the police officers. I want to thank the POA. They have a really tough job. We know how hard the police officer's job here is in El Segundo, in Southern California, in the country. And we're very thankful for everything that they do, and we're also thankful for seven years, I think, we've been asking for arbitration agreements. And we finally got it, at least on a voluntary basis, for that thirty thousand dollars. And we're hoping that people will take us up on that. They still have their legal action. We just like to avoid trial and jury and go to that binding arbitration. So thank you. And I believe this position, positions us really strongly against our peers, too. Does it not?
It does. It positions us well in the market.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you to the POA. Thank you to all your hard work, and to Daryl, and to Mark Hensley, and to Laura with Lib- Libra Cassidy, and everyone else that's worked so hard, and I just really appreciate it. I know my colleagues feel the same way.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item ten, Recreation Park Renovations Subcommittee. Mrs. Mancini.
Yes. Hello, everybody, again. Well, I'm excited, again, to be before you to talk about our Recreation Park renovation project. Tonight, I'm here to request that the council approve the formation of a Recreation Park Renovation Project Subcommittee to work alongside city staff and consultants to kick off this project. Staff is recommending that the committee include one council member and an alternate, alternate, one rec and park commissioner, and then one alternate, the director of Recreation Park and Libraries, the acting recreation superintendent, the acting park superintendent, the department senior admin analyst, and one member of the Arts and Culture Committee. Meetings of the subcommittee will likely be held monthly or as needed, depending on project needs. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to volunteer for that, to be on that committee.
All right, we have a volunteer. I'll be the backup. Okay, awesome. And then, I'm sorry, what were you suggesting for the other members? Is that it, or no?
That's it for you guys.
Okay.
Oh, and then I'm gonna, we're going to go back and get a commissioner as well. And then also, council member Prostec recommended potentially one Arts and Culture Committee member, so that we could have them provide feedback on public art that we might include in the project.
All right. Any further comments? All right, I'll move approval of Carol with Lance as a backup or alternate.
Yeah, I'll second.
And we also need to approve the subcommittee.
Oh, yes, thank you. Can we vote on this first, though?
You can do it all together.
Okay, yeah. So I'll amend my, or, yeah, I'll amend my motion to say, I'd like to move approval of these two, plus the subcommittee itself.
Thank you.
And Baldino's yours.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five zero. Thank you. I believe that concludes all of our, we went out of order, but I'm think, I think we're done, right? We got everything? Okay, city clerk, any reports this evening? City treasurer is not here. Councilmember Baldino.
Yes, I wanted to thank Mr. George, Mayor Protem, for taking the trip up to Sacramento. I want to thank council for giving the authority for the lobbyists. Having seen Sacramento work firsthand, I can't tell you how important it is to have someone on our side up there, helping us guide this ship so that we can land this plane. Terrible analogy, I understand, but thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Prostec. Sorry, sorry, Councilmember Jeru, yeah.
I just would like to mention that we never go in the same order as our agenda actually states when we show up. That's all I got.
Did I mention that this is the Clerk Appreciation Week, and the- Councilmember Prostec.
So I just want to remind everybody that it's Hometown Fair this weekend, and I really want to encourage our bakers in town to bring a treat or enter the contest. I know that some members of the council will be there judging, and it's a great little event that's been going on for how many years, Ally? A lot of years. So it's, it's a cute little hometown fair, so please bring out your kids and join in the fun. It's at the Library Park.
Thank you.
So it's ten years old.
Nice. Mayor Protem, Pimentel.
A few items, Mr. Mayor. The League of Cities Standing Tax Committee, we had an interesting meeting where they modeled if legislation went through to reallocate point-of-sale sales tax for online sales within counties and based on, it was a pretty complicated statistical model to estimate what it would do to each city. But conceivably, if the draft legislation were to pass, our sales tax revenue in El Segundo would go up by about thirteen percent, which is not an insignificant number. Our sales tax, we would, we would see an increase of thirteen percent if we realized a local allocation. Cities like ours, which consume more of these, we make the case that because this displaces local merchants by purchasing online, that it's reasonable for us to be compensated for those purchases because they occur here. Whereas you can imagine, a town that is dependent on a distribution center wants that to be realized locally. And most of those towns, this could be, you know, seventy to eighty percent of their general fund budget. So it's an elegant and dicey conversation with, as you can imagine, tons of people willing to contribute to the microphone. They, they take about four hours each, but the important thing is thirteen percent for us if it goes through. You're welcome. The, the COG Transportation Committee consecrated the movement of funding for the Sentinella train, actually, to the ITC coming out of the stadium, to try and build the train that would connect the Crenshaw Line to SoFi. What that means, one, is it should relieve traffic coming out of there, in, in theory, being constructed by twenty twenty-eight. But if it does, the hundred thirty million dollars we've moved over as a backstop for that will be returned to the COG for appropriation. So when Councilmember Baldino's the mayor in twenty twenty-eight, he could lobby for the hundred thirty million dollars to build his airship landing strip under Measure M funding. But hundred thirty million dollars for the COG is, is not a trivial amount of money, and we would be looking conceivably at projects then. Park Place Phase Two would be something that might be a candidate for that money. Or, you know, if we, if we want to try and do something even more creative on transportation. We participated in the Sunstone Challenge. Would you like to speak to, speak about that when it's, it's your comments? You, you just really know more about it, but, but, I, I don't like to talk about things when we finish second, but we finished second. I'll spoil that. You can tell us why. But it's a, it's an interesting opportunity for us to attract, you know, part of the incubator that we had talked about in our strategic plan. Sunstone does exactly that sort of thing. They're very prominent in the venture capital world when it comes to public-private partnerships. And the city manager, I'll let you speak to that. The only last two things of moderate interest to us, speaking of our AB twelve sixteen trip to Sacramento, the interesting part of that that's relevant to Iperion is the other side, who was well-represented and got three votes on that committee, is very concerned about this setting of precedent on other treatment plants. And, you know, they have done quietly, which they didn't raise, an effective job of keeping metals and toxins out of the conversation about what those air sensors would do. So right now, the sensors are doing great things in, in all those pieces with VOCs and NOCs and those kinds of things that are relevant to us. But there's other things that could be in the air, and they have done a good job of effectively setting the line of battle on those ozone-creating chemistries, and not talking about airborne toxins. So something to look out for is we go further down the road in those meetings. And then lastly, sanitation. Everyone's afraid of when all this snow melts, it flooding specifically in the Central Valley, where a lot of our LA County sanitation goes to compost. So they've been shipping that down to Imperial County now. I know you're very excited to hear that. We didn't have a quorum to approve that at county sanitation, but we got a real whiz-bang of a presentation about it. So if anyone would like to know where their dewatered waste goes, I can talk to you about it for hours and tell you what happens if it floods. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Did I ever mention how thankful I am that you took over the sanitation committee?
It's an opportunity to excel, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
City attorney.
Nothing's easy, mayor. Thank you.
City manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, yes, we spent roughly half a day, if, if not longer, down at USC at the Price, well, actually, at the USC Hotel. But essentially, what this, the Sunstone case challenge was, twenty-five graduate students from the Price School broke up into five groups of five each. And they represented, there were two groups that represented the city of Long Beach. One group represented, represented El Segundo, another group, Garden Grove, and the fifth group represented Irvine. They spent the last two months coming up with strategies and plans to attract and retain businesses in each of those communities. And I want to thank Barbara and Christina and our, and our economic development staff, their, their work with the, our students, who did a fantastic job. And also thank the Mayor Protem, who was the keynote speaker. El Segundo got a lot of love that day, and it was really good to see, unfortunately, we did come, I heard we came in second, so. But the, the winning team got a stipend of five thousand dollars from Sunstone. And we'll be bringing something back to you regarding the incubator and accelerator program, maybe a draft of an MOU, should we want to engage them to initiate the accelerator program in our city. So that's, that's separate and apart from- That's, that's separate and apart from the competition. Only other thing is, you know, a lot of significant items on the agenda tonight. Appreciate that. I want to thank the council, and the MOU between the city and the POA, POA kind of got lost in the shuffle, but I want to thank you, the council, for your policy direction, hanging in there. I've been at that for a year, I know you all have been at that longer, so kudos to all of you and to Rebecca and to Mark for bringing that to conclusion. It's a very momentous evening tonight with all the items tonight, so thank you for all of that. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thankfully, we have no memorials to read tonight, so we are concluding this. Thank you, good night.